Okay, I'll call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Special meeting, alright. Thanks.
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan. Ms. Marlin. Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, May 2nd, 2016.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. Alright, we move on to petitions and communications. Dural Cruz.
Good evening. I have to apologize because I'm terribly confused about the meeting situation. I would suggest it might be helpful if this Cunningham Township is having a meeting to list that on the city's website also, so the public's aware of it. And I came to speak to the special meeting, I guess, which was listed Dex, but you changed to the end. And I don't wish to sit for the next hour and a half to do that. So, I'm just going to make a couple of comments now, rather than doing that, and apologize for the confusion to the clerk if I fill out two or three different forms to do that. Very quickly, what I wanted to ask you to consider when you discuss the ordinance for the TIF proposal this evening, in section, I should find that. The section six on the Joint Review Board on page three, which you'll look at later in the meeting. It specifically says that the Joint Review Board is specified in the act shall be convened by the municipality and such Joint Review Board shall meet and review the public record, planning documents, blah, 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 blah. What I'm interested in asking you to consider this evening, when you look at this, is what exactly does review the public record mean? So, when you schedule this meeting, and the taxing bodies come to this particular Joint Review Board, I would like to suggest that, I assume it probably would be staff, prepare the public record, as I understand it, and if I'm interpreting right, is what is the historical performance of TIF I and II the past couple of years? So that the taxing bodies have that public record also to take into account as they look at the new proposal that is being placed before the public. And I would suggest that it might be simplest just to ask the staff to basically take the last 10 years, for example, of the TIF reports and the line items, and see where the allocations of funds and how they've been used the previous 10 years? So that the public and the taxing bodies can have a sense of, I guess, the public record of how TIF has, monies have been allocated and used. And the last thing I would like to suggest, when you look at the redevelopment proposal, which I looked at this afternoon, it's a fascinating document, and it's full of all kinds of ironies and interesting things. The very fact that it's, I would suspect, almost the carbon copy of what might have been presented to the city 35 years ago, in terms of the needs for a TIF district. I'm sure there'll be plenty of opportunities to address the proposal itself, and I really don't want to go into that in any detail tonight. But I did want to reference page 49, and it's the old argument, the "but for" section of TIF proposals, where they always say, "These things wouldn't happen but for TIF." And I'd just like to read two sentences to basically have the public be aware of what is actually happening in terms of their tax dollars being used. Because these are pretty important statements that are made here. "Underscoring the economic need for municipal finance assistance in a form of tax increment financing is the certainty that there will not be commitments for private development revitalization without the city's commitment to provide such municipal finance assistance." Now, that's totally contrary to the free market. And somebody is absolutely certain that they need-
You have one minute, Mr. Cruz.
... taxpayers' money to subsidize economic development that wouldn't otherwise occur because it says that it would, the private market or the business developer will not be able to overcome the extraordinary costs without the assistance, and as such, it's needed. I often wonder, in principle, if TIF's presence simply allow businesses to ask, and if it wasn't there, they'd do it. But my question is, if we want taxpayers' monies to go to investment projects that the banks, loan agencies, investors are unwilling to take the risk of, just seems in principle an improper use of school district, public health, Forest Preserve, MTD monies. There's just that irony that's there, that's very troubling. And so, I'm hopeful, hopefully, there'll be a lot more public discussion on this, and I just wanted to share those two comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. and Bishop King James Underwood do not wish to speak, but they'd like to register their concerns about the Dr. Ellis subdivision. Anna Barnes.
Good evening. I became a volunteer at Lerman Community Garden at the intersection of Lerman and Washington Streets in Urbana last year. And due to a primary volunteer stepping back, one of our volunteers was 85 years old, I ended up managing the garden this year for the near term, until we can hire two people from the neighborhood to help manage it. But I was really disheartened last week to learn that there has been an application for yet another gaming parlor adjacent to the neighborhood. And it would seem that the neighborhood is already overly well-served by gaming. There are two, and already within walking distance, and there's another one slated, is under construction. And you know, and we work very hard in the garden, and the garden actually symbolizes, you know, a lot of hope for the residents there, you know, because that area is missing so many amenities. It's an area that, you know, just, if you can just pull it up on a Google map, you know, you have two restaurants on the west end of it and nothing further east. So, you know, of all the developments we were hoping to see, this is not one. This is nothing that's family-friendly, it's, it just seems to be going in the opposite direction that we had really hoped that, you know, things would go for the neighborhood. And I know that Councilman Smythe had raised the concern that maybe there were too many gaming establishments, getting to be too many in town, and I would say that, you know, especially in this case, this is going to be one too many. And I would urge you to do what's in your power, to look at, you know, putting a moratorium on that. You know, I don't think that this is the direction of development that we want to see in the neighborhood. And I know that in speaking with members of the Lerman Neighborhood Action Committee this morning, we did meet with Mr. Patel. You know, you know, it is his intent to put that there regardless of, you know, whether it really will benefit the neighborhood or not. So, you know, I know that he has, you know, talked about a restaurant and some other things, backup plans, and I would really hope that those backup plans actually become the plan. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Rachel Storm.
Good evening. I'm coming to speak on a very similar issue. I'm a resident living within a couple blocks of Lerman Neighborhood. I volunteered and collaborated with the Lerman Neighborhood Action Committee on a number of their projects. As a friend of the committee, I volunteered today to come to stand in solidarity with them and speak their concerns to the Urbana City Council members regarding this proposal put forth by the new owners of the old home run at 1509 East Washington, applying for a liquor license. Let me begin by saying that the Lerman Neighborhood has too few family-friendly places, a reality that undermines all of the important community efforts to develop supportive, family-friendly activities in the area. We need businesses and projects that enrich the community, not gambling sites. Indeed, the city of Urbana's land-usage plans call for businesses that serve neighborhood residents, and the Lerman Neighborhood Action Committee has indicated that a gaming parlor would undermine neighborhood health and community development. Our neighbors at the Lerman Neighborhood Action Committee have worked tirelessly, often without compensation or expected recognition, to improve the quality of life in this low-income housing area through the establishment of a vibrant community garden, arts-infused family and youth programming, and the installment of streetlights and other safety measures to promote health and safety for all the residents and surrounding neighborhoods. Lerman Neighborhood Action Committee leaders have shared concerns about liquor licensing in the past, and all too often, low-income neighborhoods exist within this landscape of deficit. Where the nearest grocery store is a gas station or convenience store, or even liquor store, and the gathering places are bars and strip clubs, Lerman is no exception. For low-income families, these businesses are obstacles to health, happiness, and family, and the family orientation required to support a well-resourced community and positive quality of life for Urbana residents. The Lerman Neighborhood especially needs family-friendly businesses, as current neighborhood planning calls for an additional 100-plus rental units to be added or rehabbed on or just off Lerman Avenue. As per an agreement between the Housing Authority of Champaign County, the city of Urbana, and Green Street Realty, the gaming parlor will not improve the quality of life near Lerman Avenue now or even into the future. Area residents report much lower quality of life than their surrounding neighbors do, according to community assessments that were conducted in 2014. And it should be underscored that Urbana already has a number of gaming parlors. This has been something that even within my own friend circle, we've been really noticing lately around our community. And we could say that this one would especially be one too many. I'm here today as both a neighbor and a citizen of Urbana who cares deeply for local families and neighborhoods. So, on May 23rd, when this hearing will take place, I ask that you all take seriously the concerns of the citizens of that neighborhood who will be most directly impacted, and resist the effort to establish a liquor and gaming parlor by voting against the approval of this license. And going forward, I hope for your steadfast commitment as Urbana City Council members to support Lerman Neighborhood Action Committee's leadership, as they've really shown up as leaders in defining the needs, interests, and resources required to help improve the quality of life in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think there's a question for you, Eric Jacobson.
Yeah. How would you feel, or, and to what extent do you have a sense the neighbors would feel, about something that was primarily a restaurant, but also had a couple of machines, as has been becoming common? Would that be, I mean, you can't make a commitment to that tonight, but would that, would that be something that you would consider?
Well, I can't speak at all for the neighborhood, and I don't want to. But one thing I'll say is that that neighborhood has routinely shown leadership in terms of defining what the interests of the neighborhood are. So, there are identifiable leaders and an organized, you know, committee of people that I think would be great consultants on a question like that.
And I guess there's-
And Anne is one of them.
Yeah, and Anne is one of them, yeah. Well, and I, I mean, I, probably, Robin has spoken to several of us, but Robin did speak to me about this issue also, so I've heard that perspective.
Yeah, and I know Robin so often is the person who's here, seated here, talking to all of you, and I think it's, you know, so important to remember that, you know, within low-income situations, it's very difficult. Work, unemployment, difficulty in mobility, both from disability and socioeconomic realities, prevent people from coming to meetings like this. So, it's one of the reasons why I wanted to show up today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dennis.
I also received a letter which I was asked to read during public input, so if we have time right now to do that?
Sure.
Thanks. Alright, so, on the same topic, this is a letter that was sent to me by Robin Arbiter herself. She can't attend tonight, but I'll make it as quick as I can. And she writes, "I am writing to request an immediate moratorium on liquor licensing that would facilitate additional video gaming parlors in Urbana. I like, I like many of my neighbors have a particular concern about the license that you will be considering at a hearing on May 23rd. The application concerns a business at 1509 East Washington. My concern is that if the liquor license application is granted, neighbors and planners will lose the opportunity for a timely reflection about what will constitute saturation of the market to a degree that neither the city nor the owners will benefit. Underlying that, I have a deep concern about the role that a proposed business will play in the neighbor's current reality and the surrounding neighborhood's development. If a moratorium does not include this application, whatever impact there will be on the neighborhood may be irreversible. My concern is not related to issues of crime or addiction, or government benefiting from gaming. Considerations of all that is in the council's past. However, what is at stake here presently at Lerman Neighborhood residents and nearby residents hopes for our neighborhood? The role that you all play is one of facilitating and assisting the neighborhood to grow in a healthy and family-friendly, multi-generational, accessible, and pleasant way. Your role is critical because you're, because our neighborhood is currently one of which the majority of people living closest to 1509 East Washington report that their quality of life is poor or only fair. Additionally, the majority rate is poor, the amenities in the area concerning parks, facilities, community gathering areas, streets, sidewalks. Those of us who remain in a neighborhood in which are increasingly attritioned out by feeling housing and minimally hoping for improvements, accessible amenities, is very stressful. The Lerman Neighborhood Action Committee constitutes, continues to participate in a comprehensively better plan for the neighborhood. In fact, Lerman Neighborhood residents are not lacking in gaming opportunities. In addition to the three parlors within walking distance, there are neighborhood bars offering this as well. It appears that many of the liquor licenses that you've approved have gone to venues embedded among other amenities. And what does it mean for a neighborhood to be characterized by gaming and drinking opportunities without the other amenities such as shopping, eating, gathering, with friends or family? This kind of lopsided business climate creates a social climate that influences daily life. When our young people gather here, the gathering is not sanctioned. They are viewed as a nuisance or criminal event, and when the closest food that we can access is the stores that sell nothing fresh. You can trace our kids' paths to school by the honey bun wrappers they leave in their wake. Mr. Patel, the new owner, who owns all four of the available small business spots adjacent to the intersection of Washington and Lerman, has certainly seen his business affected by housing loss and difficult neighborhood business climate. And I hope that his experiences will help him understand the concerns of his residents and customers. Mr. Patel was kind enough to show the neighborhood and L-NAC representatives through the building today, explaining that he would, that he would like to use a third of the building for a video gaming parlor and the remaining two-thirds to rent as a restaurant franchise holder. The trouble is that there is no imminent restaurant opening while there is an immediate plan to open the video parlor. A moratorium on licensing that would include considering the Washington application would allow the city to study the saturation issue and the specific issues related to the Lerman Neighborhood. And it would not stop Mr. Patel from pursuing his plan to bringing a renter in as a food franchise. If the moratorium is not possible, then by whatever means are possible, please at least defer or deny the timing, for the time being, the granting of a license for 1509 East Washington, until the impact of it can be considered by the city officials and neighborhood residents in light of the serious pressures and the higher hopes that those of us who live there have. And it's, and signed, Robin Arbiter.
Okay, I have a proclamation. Whereas public works, projects, facilities, and infrastructure are vital to the city of Urbana's continued growth and economic success, supporting job creation and development in transportation, education, public safety, sustainability, and other sectors that are essential to building livable neighborhoods and communities, and whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from the city of Urbana who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens, and whereas the community recognizes the contributions of public works professionals and extends sincere appreciation for their commitment to excellence in their efforts to improve and enhance the health, safety, welfare, and prosperity of those in the city of Urbana, and whereas the year 2016 marks the 56th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore I, Laurel Lund Pressing, Mayor of the city of Urbana, do hereby proclaim May 17th to 23rd, 2016, as National Public Works Week in the city of Urbana. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public work services, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, not only this week, but throughout the year. So, that's next week, folks, and a lot of times, people don't realize all the care that goes into maintaining not only the streets, but everything that's under the streets, which is one of our biggest expenses. Erin.
Just for an announcement, petitions and communications, I guess, there's a day, the Day of Gratitude that Brother Hakeem Salam has come to us and talked to us about on a regular basis. It's coming up on May 26th of 2016. That will be from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Urbana Civic Center. And it grows on you, this gratitude, you know? So, 6:30 to 9:30?
8:30.
8:30. Yes, ma'am. 6:30 to 8:30 at the Urbana Civic Center, May 26th. So, I wanted to announce that. And for all of you who are wishing to celebrate the birthday of your current state representative, Carol Ammons, there's a community event on June 1st from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the King Park. It's in Urbana, Mayor. This event will be taking place in Urbana. It's free for folks to come on out and do some children-to-play. It's a family fun event from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on June 1st.
Okay, anyone else? Would you take the chair, Charlie? Because we're going to go into a budget discussion.
Okay. And are you going to give the overview?
Right. We're going to give our, our standard overview here.
Okay, everybody got their budget ready?
You have five minutes.
She gets five, and I get five, right?
Oh, okay. Well, it's a new, it's a new format of budget, so it's going to take a little bit to learn what's where here.
Okay, we're going to do the overview, and then we'll get into individual budgets. I think you've heard this before. You've been hearing this since 2008, that we're having another hold-the-line budget. That, that was when the recession started, and of course, this year, we have the uncertainties of the fact that our state of Illinois does not have a budget yet for this year, and there's a little over a month left to go in the fiscal year. And I don't know how they're doing on next year's budget. And we also have the uncertainty about when the hospital tax situation will be settled by the Illinois Supreme Court. But what we've done this year, I think that Elizabeth's done a great job, she and her staff have done a really great job reorganizing this whole thing into something that's more understandable and follows generally accepted principles. So, what we're doing is trying to hold the line on our operating costs, so that our operating costs do not exceed what we normally expect in revenue. And yet, we had all kinds of special demands for capital improvements, and we have to put the money into many things. And if we don't put it in now, it's going to cost more later. You have to fix a roof before it really deteriorates and creates all kinds of damage, as just one example. So, in order to fund those special capital improvement projects, we are dipping into the fund balance. But I think we're being very responsible on how we're handling this budget, and I'll turn it over to Elizabeth.
So, I'll just give you a few of the highlights from my perspective as your finance director. Much of what you see that's new in the budget, I would characterize as course corrections. So, some of those things are, for example, making some corrections in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, which we discussed last year was not sustainable. We would not have been able to purchase the tools and equipment that our employees need to do their jobs without significant changes. So, that correction, if you will, will require additional transfers of $2.7 million over three years, so just shy of $900,000 a year for three years. It also requires adjustments to our annual transfers based on the corrected replacement schedules with realistic lives for the equipment, and that amounts to about $340,000 a year in the general fund. And then also, when we reviewed this in detail, we found that there were some items in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund that really should have been operating expenditures, they were not capital equipment. And so, shifting those items into the general fund required a $134,000 increase in annual expenses. Another course correction is, hmm, trying to think how to explain this, is eliminating the supplemental capital improvement fund. So, for many years, there were transfers from the capital improvement fund to the supplemental capital improvement fund, which was primarily used to pay for operating expenditures. So, I would assume that every year when the city council and the budget approved a transfer to the capital improvement fund, that that was intended to pay for capital improvements, but not all of that was going to pay for capital improvements, and it will now, and that difference is over $150,000. Some smaller items. The Economic Development Fund actually had no ongoing source of revenue other than the market revenue, which goes to pay for the market. And so, we've shifted some economic development expenses into the general fund. That amounts to about $38,000 annually, but that puts it in a place where, where we can fully expect to fund that on an ongoing basis. And also, a little more technical, but you, you probably have noticed this in your quarterly reports, but as of the end of FY '15, we are moving closer to cash basis accounting, and so, we're not counting revenues before they're received, which gives us a more realistic picture of what we actually have to spend. Some other new expenditures. The biggest news here is the transfer for capital improvements. So, the base level for that transfer is about $690,000, but we've made additional one-time allocations of nearly a million dollars to pay for facility improvements, additional funding for road improvements, and also another half million dollars for the MCOR project. So, that's nearly an extra million dollars from the general fund, which will happen in next year's budget. Also, we've included some additional support for the library, $125,000 to begin to pay for HVAC improvements, and $30,000 to help offset the first-year cost of hiring a fundraiser for the foundation. They believe that once that program is up and running, that position will pay for itself, but we're very interested in getting that off the ground, because in the long term, that will help them to pay for some of the facility improvements that they need. Some other small increases are included in the budget, and those will be described to you when departments present their budgets. A few changes in format in the budget document that you may have already noticed. We did include proposed financial policies, which is new this year. That's on page nine of your document, and we will talk about that more next week. We included some additional information at the back of the book in the supplemental information section. So, there's a summary of all of our outstanding debt and debt service payments, and also some additional information on property taxes, as well as equipment replacement schedules. And just for convenience sake, we've moved ordinances approving and- And just for convenience sake, we've moved ordinances approving and amending the budget and the resolution adopting the financial policies to the back. It's more a reference item, so. Looking at the revenues for all funds, as you can see, my mouse isn't pointing, revenues from our estimate for FY16 to FY17 are actually decreasing by about $7 million. That's really nothing to be concerned about. The anomaly there is really in FY16 because there were substantial one-time revenues in FY16. That includes one and a half million from the TIF III distribution of Provena property tax revenue, about 3.8 million in various capital improvement funds from reimbursements and grants. And also, TIF I ends on December 31st, 2016. So we will no longer, after the end of this calendar year, be receiving that property tax revenue. Looking at expenditures for all funds, you can see most of the fluctuation here from year to year is in that top, that bright blue piece, which is capital. That's perfectly normal. It's normal to have lower spending, save up some money for capital projects and then spend larger amounts in some years. Those expenditures have been as low, as low as 9.4 million in the FY17 budget, and as high as 18.5 million in the FY16 estimate. Also, there's a large blip in services expenditures in FY15. So that's this green area over here. And what that is, is the expense that we made to distribute TIF, the post-TIF III money for Provena property tax revenue. So we distributed it here in this year, but then we didn't receive it until the following fiscal year. We had to pay it to the county, and then the county had to pay it back to us, and that happened at the end of a fiscal year. Also, one thing to notice here is that personnel costs in FY17 are more than half of the total city budget for all funds. Looking at general fund revenues by source, the thing that you'll want to notice here is that in the general fund, sales tax is about a third of our revenues. And that's something to think about because sales tax tends to fluctuate and be cyclical, which makes it more difficult to balance the budget. And realistically, looking forward, without some retail growth, that's, may not keep up with our growth in expenditures. Also, income tax, over here in the green, is about 13% of our general fund budget. This is one of the items that in the past, in state budget discussions, has been put on the table as a potential reduction in local government revenue to balance the state Looking at general fund expenditures by classification, as you can see, in the general fund, about 70% of our expenditures are for personnel costs. That includes salaries and benefits, such as health insurance and pension costs. Total expenditures in that category increased by 4.3%. Interfund transfers, up here in the blue on this chart, are the second largest category of expenditures in the general fund, the 16% of the total. And that, again, is things like our transfers to fund capital improvements. That's a fairly large portion of our general fund budget. Some of the increases that you'll see in the general fund are, in interfund transfers, that's increasing by 31%, again, primarily due to vehicle and equipment replacement fund transfers and capital transfers. The next largest increase is 25% in services. Part of that is 400,000 in one-time costs related to financial software and work order software in public works. And 129,000 of that is increases in payments for the MetCAD dispatch agreement, including the repayment of previously deferred increases. So looking at the outcome of all this in the general fund, if you look at the fund balance, you can see in FY14, we ended down here at 3.1 million. FY15, we ended with 6.1 million. FY17, we're currently estimating will end at 8.7 million. But then we expect to spend down a substantial portion of that on one-time expenditures. And this green line here is the policy limit, the minimum, that the mayor would like to establish for fund balance in the general fund. Then in terms of looking at a balanced budget, the way we look at this is, we want to balance recurring revenues and expenditures to know that we can sustain our budget over the long term. So if you look at this, here last year, we had a larger difference between recurring revenue and recurring expense. This year, it gets a little bit closer because our expenditures are growing faster than our revenues, but we still have a balanced budget. Our recurring expenditures are less than 98% of recurring revenues, which is where we want to be. So, looking ahead, as the mayor mentioned, we're dealing with continuing uncertainty. The state budget has potential impact on our budget. We don't know when they're going to get one, but it will be nice to know. And we still have the outstanding issue with hospital property taxes, which potentially increases our assessed valuation by $100 million. So we will continue to maintain recurring expenditures below recurring revenues to give ourselves some flexibility. And we'll also maintain substantial reserves to deal with that uncertainty as we look towards the future. In terms of review tonight, as soon as we're done with this overview, the mayor will talk about the executive department budget. I will talk about the finance budget. And Libby will talk about the community development budget. And then next week, we'll talk about public works, the library, fire and police budgets. Also, next week, we'll do a little more in-depth discussion of the financial policies. On June 4th, we'll hold a public hearing. And then we plan to adopt the budget in a special meeting on June 13th.
Any questions?
Eric.
Oh, I'm sorry. Duh. You put me down as duh.
Have we received from the state our share of the income tax payments?
Yes. The Illinois Municipal League has been very diligent about protecting that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, right now, we are, last year, come July, they started holding back those payments. I know that the Municipal League is working on a bill specifically to have a continuing appropriation for that purpose, so that those payments won't get held up. But we can, our fund balance is such and our financial position is such that, you know, if they defer those payments for several months, even six months, that's not going to be a major concern for us.
Other questions, general questions? I just have a real quick one. VERF, and you're funding it better, but I noticed that we're also having to allocate 125,000 to the library. Is there a VERF for the library or capital, you know, a capital building? You know, they should have the equivalent of VERF, or we should have a line in our VERF for them, or something like that. And that's something I've talked about for a number of years.
I agree, but that does not exist now. I think that's, that's basically the reason for the thought to establish a fundraising position with the foundation, that they can be able to build reserves for those kinds of improvements.
Erin?
I don't know if this question fits here, or maybe if it's something for Libby or Brandon, but how do you determine the impact of a festival or something, or even a TIF, right? I'm trying to figure out, how do you determine what the flow is or the income is that comes into an area or to, what do you use as some sort of indicator for that?
As far as I'm concerned, those are wild guesses. I think it's very hard to document something like that. And when I hear, you know, the tourism industry say what that means in terms of dollars, or talking about the multiplier effect, that if somebody spends a dollar, then that, you know, goes to somebody else who spends more money. I think those are exaggerated numbers. And I'm saying that as a former urban and regional economist. It has some effect, but I think it's being exaggerated in the reports that we see.
So, but I'm trying to sort of remember and recall a conversation I had recently about receipts that we have to turn in to the state or something like that. You all got to help me understand here, but there's our, the revenue that comes into our hotels, our motels, our businesses and stuff like that, is there a way to register, for instance, the month of June coming up? If there's three weeks in June, we can measure the amount of money that was spent in downtown Urbana. And then there's a festival at the end of June. We can compare and contrast how much there was a change from those first three weeks to that fourth week. Is there a way to do that?
You could, we can measure hotel motel tax, and we can measure retail sales, but somebody coming to a festival doesn't necessarily mean they're going to use a hotel room.
No, I guess what I'm just trying to figure out from...
Sure, we could, you know, plot these things, but when they talk about the economic impact, they're talking about beyond the immediate direct effect. They're talking about how that money generates more money as circulating through the local economy. And those are the numbers that I think are exaggerated.
So, just to be as clear as possible, I'm just wondering, when a Seth Fine comes in and said, hey, Pig Million is going to generate, 5,000 people are going to show up, right? Is there a way for an organization or a group like that to say, we generated X amount of dollars or X amount of flow? Any way to gauge that at all?
I think those are just guesses.
I was going to, you know, I know Mike Munson has looked at these numbers sometimes. I think a lot of these numbers are monthly, though, aren't they?
Yeah, if you go to the detailed trial, you can see the monthly receipts of sales taxes and hotel motel taxes in particular. And I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't list hotel by names, but you can tell the busiest hotels, and you could track them month to month.
Well, we do have revenues for each hotel for each month that they file a return. So, you know, and some things are pretty predictable, like our revenue, our hotel motel tax revenues in May will be up because of graduation, you know. But we don't have detail, more precise than for each hotel for each month. And you won't find that in our financial reports. That's detail that we have in a spreadsheet in the finance department. We do also obtain some detailed information about sales tax revenue from the state, but that's highly restricted. We're not able to share that at any level of detail. We've had to sign a confidentiality agreement with the state to get that information. And we typically don't receive it till months and months and months after the time period that the data is provided for.
Okay. Eric?
Yeah, I guess that, I mean, I share the mayor's judgment about guesses, essentially, because what you're trying to do is you're trying to compare an actuality to a hypothetical. The actuality is that you did a festival. The hypothetical is, what would the difference be if you hadn't done it? And you don't know that reality. But the only thing, but I guess the thing you can do is compare, is to look at a broad cross-section of communities and see what correlates with healthy growth and, you know, development in communities. And I think that, well, we'll hear from community development, but I think that, I think that our ED people do a pretty good job from that perspective of doing things that seem to make sense based on national experience across comparable communities.
Well, the reason why I'm trying to understand this is because, I guess, from a general business standpoint and model, you wouldn't invest in something if you don't know what the return is going to be, or have some idea that it's going to bring a positive cash flow for you or something like that, right? So even if we're investing, if it's, whatever it is, whatever mechanism we're using, whether it's TIF, or it's just straight-up rebates, or whatever it may be to try to get some incentive or investment into a festival, it just doesn't seem like it's a sound, prudent behavior for us to just say, yeah, here's $10,000 or $5,000, and we have no clue whether or not it's going to, you know, actually generate a positive cash flow for the city of Urbana. I don't, I don't know. It's just kind of puzzling to me.
Bill?
Yeah, I had a question about, you said the MetCAD includes your payment of the deferred increases. That's just the amounts due this year. Is that right, or is it?
Right, yeah. Includes the one-fifth repayment for the two years that were deferred, as well as the full amount for the current year.
Do you know offhand how much it would be to pay off both of those, if we just wanted to pay them both off?
I'm going to say it's over, a little over $200,000.
Okay. And I guess, on the hotel motel tax, I noticed that the convention, there's two items, there's like a hotel motel tax, and there's a hotel tax from conventions. And the one from conventions is about double what it was last year. Is it, do you know, I mean, it's not a lot, it's like $20,000, $25,000, but usually it runs about 10 or 12. Is that a clerical error, or is there something significant there?
It's probably a reporting thing. So we rely on the hotels to report that to us as a separate item when they pay their hotel motel tax. So, you know, it could be that there was an increase, that we had some new event that we didn't have prior, but it could just be that they just realized, oh gosh, there's this other box on the form, and I'm supposed to separate that out. I'm not sure that it's really meaningful.
Okay, thank you.
And the MetCAD payments have been smoothed out. So the increase this year was only 6%. So that was good. So it makes it more affordable for us, because we had some huge increases, like 21, 27% I think was the really big one before.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think if there's any way to pay it off, I think it's caused some friction between Champaign-Urbana. And I know that members of the Champaign City Council have brought it up several times during their discussion of public safety issues. So I think it'd be better to pay it off and get it out of the way if we could.
Okay, other questions before we get further in? Okay, next.
I'll do the executive department. And if you want to look on page 35, that's the summary by different parts of it. So the overall is up 6%, but that is due to some shifting around into the information technology department. There were some, you want to comment on that?
There were some expenses that, when information technology was split off from the finance department, didn't move with IT. And I think Sanford and I just agreed it was easier to put those in the IT budget. It was about, I want to say, $37,000, $38,000.
So basically, we're carrying through on keeping the number of employees the same. And what we see for increases is the salary increases that we had committed under our collective bargaining contracts, which we also gave to our non-union people. And if you want to get into the details, page 36 has the mayor's office broken down into the various categories, personnel, supplies and services. And what we're doing was, we had 175,000 to start out with on special counsel, the legal counsel, which is under services. It's 0201-133903. And we're adding $10,000 to that because of the Mohammed Aquifer, right? Was it the Mohammed? Yeah.
So actually, one of the items that was in that supplemental capital improvement fund was some expenses for our share of legal services related to the Aquifer. And so that, that was added to the mayor's budget for special counsel.
So some of these increases aren't really total increases in spending, and they're shifting from one place in the budget to another. Do you have any questions on the detail? Yes?
Is legal activity related to the Mohammed Aquifer continuing, or is that dormant? dormant for a while, at least as far as expenditures are concerned?
Uh, we have attorneys hired and there's gonna be another meeting of the consortium, uh, later this month, so I'll find out more detail about what's gonna be done, but, um, it's something that we are committed to do.
Yeah, no, and I think, I think that's good. I mean, there is, we had a great, got a great agreement, but there's more to do.
Other questions? Mike?
I think that some of that extra legal money was for, uh, the, uh, the water rate case that we're contesting, no? Okay.
Both? Well, we're, we're doing that with the city of Champaign and some other units of government, so we, we try to work with other governments on these water issues. And in the past, we've questioned before the Illinois Commerce Commission the requests that Illinois American Water has for their rate increases.
Dennis, you had a question?
Yeah, and then, this is kind of a small thing, but, um, when the mayor's office supports, um, individual activities or events, uh, if we, you know, if we're gonna have another birthday party or something like that, or special events, uh, festival donations, um, and, um, you know, paying the dues for the Sister City program, which is about 500 a year, what fund does that fall from?
That's in the general fund in the mayor's budget.
Uh-huh.
But, you know, it depends on what the activity is. Um, I don't pay for a lot of festivals or anything like that, but for the Sister Cities dues, I pay, um, membership fees for the organizations that we belong to.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So, there's not a line for that, so it's in just the general aspect, the general fund part of it?
It's in the line item for dues and memberships.
Dues and memberships, okay, gotcha, thanks.
Okay.
I'm next. So, I'm just gonna give you quickly the big picture on the finance budget, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions about the details, I'm sure you've all read it, so. Um, so, just looking back to the current year and the budget that you approved, um, in June 2015, we reduced in this budget our front office staff from three to 2.5 FTEs, and that's manageable at this point, but I'm just gonna say things are tight. We don't have, um, a lot of, um, extra time to take on new tasks. We added in this year's budget $370,000 for financial software, that was $300,000 for upfront costs and $70,000 annually. We're gonna push that back into next year, we're in the process, but we haven't made a selection and we're not ready to sign a contract for that at, at this point before the end of the fiscal year. We did, in this year's budget, make one temporary position permanent, um, and that has really improved our ability to comply with financial requirements, improved reporting. You notice you're getting monthly reports of all our expenditures and quarterly financial reports, which I understand is something that hadn't happened for a long time, and it's improved our ability to focus on some of the analysis, analysis that we need to do. For example, forecasting 25 years' worth of VERF revenues and expenditures so that we can make sure that the, the thing works for us. So, in next year's budgets, we, we didn't make any new spending requests. We are deferring the funds to purchase the financial software into next year's budget because that decision will come sometime after July 1. Um, oh, and, and here's the, here's the number, which I, I got wrong before, we shifted $17,420 into the IT budget in the exec department. That's primarily cost for supplies, which somehow got left behind in our budget. Our budget for financing, the general fund, will increase by 2.16%. It would have been a little bit higher if we hadn't shifted those costs to IT, it would have been about 2.4%. The big money thing here is the financial software, so we received three proposals in April. At this point, we've narrowed it down to two finalists. We'll be doing demonstrations in late July and early August. It may require some compromises to make that work within our budget, but nothing that I'm overly concerned about. So, um, there may be some, um, functions that we could pick up at some point in the future that aren't really sort of mission critical. A few of the examples of things that we expect to accomplish with the software are automating manual processes. Right now, we're manually posting most of our revenue transactions, uh, most of our bank reconciliation process is manual. We'd like to automate employee access to benefit options and tax withholding. We'd like to integrate systems that currently are not integrated. For example, we don't really have an integrated HR payroll system, we just have the payroll system. So, we'd like to have a fully functioning HR system that talks to our payroll system because they share a lot of information. We don't currently have any, um, ability to build a budget in our financial system. That's all being done right now in an access database and then later entered into the financial system. Also, our billing is all done in an access database, it's not connected, connected to the financial system. And when I say billing, I'm talking about miscellaneous billing, so all those odds and ends that we bill people for. We'd like to implement a more standard purchasing and payables processes. We'd like to be able to use purchase orders and encumbrances. We don't currently really have that ability. And I think most of all, I would really like to have a financial system that's useful both for finance staff and all of our customers. So, somebody like Bill in Public Works should be able to sit down in front of his computer and very quickly call up a screen and understand where he's at with his budget. That's not something that he can easily do now. In terms of the general fund budget for the finance department, um, this kinda shows the trend over the past few years. The big thing to note here is that, um, the big increase in the green part of the bar here in FY17 is our services budget. That's where we currently have, have budgeted funds, um, for the financial system improvements that we're talking about, and that's the reason for the big jump. Without that, it would be very small. We do budget for some other funds, so retained risk and retained risk reserves are budgets that I prepare. We'll have some increases in insurance premiums, but our contributions will remain level, even though our claims expenses fluctuate considerably from year to year. We've also prepared the budget for the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, so as you know, there are some major changes there, but the goal really is to make sure that our staff have the tools and equipment that they need to do their jobs. We don't wanna be, um, telling Public Works, "No, you can't have dump trucks, 'cause we haven't set aside money to pay for that." Looking ahead, financial software implementation is, is gonna be a long and challenging process for us. First priority will be basic financial functions. There'll be, it won't just be changing software, but there will probably be many changes to the processes that we use for purchasing, for payables, for payroll. And so, there's gonna be a lot of education, not just for finance staff on using a new system, but for everybody, everybody else in the organization that uses financial information. In the future, I may, I may come back to you at some point down the line and ask to look at adding some additional modules that are beyond the core financial systems. That would be something that we would review on a case-by-case basis. Some of those things might include, um, online reporting for self-reported taxes like hotel motel tax. That, that probably is one that would be high on my list. And probably at some point here in the fairly near future, we'll be looking at the parking ticket processing system and needing to replace that. So, that's kinda the big picture for finance. I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Eric?
What's involved in the, so we have the new, uh, parking meter system, so you're talking about the back end of that in case somebody didn't pay. We don't, we, we have an inefficient or cumbersome system for dealing with that?
Sanford might know a little bit more about this, but, um, we have a, we have a system that is no longer fully supported by the vendor. It's a firm out of Australia. I think there have been issues with getting customer support because they're halfway around the world and we're not working on the same schedule. It's, it's, um, it's not everything, it's also not everything we would desire in a modern or, um, really, um, user-friendly ticket processing system.
Bill?
Um, I know currently our system somehow interfaces with the open data portal. I know that, I, I've, I've enjoyed the, the opportunity to go in there and click on it and drill down to see what we're spending money on, get graphics and bar charts and everything. Will this take new customization to get it to do that, or is that something that's just working with our old system now?
I, I, I am certain that there's, there's a way that our new system will work with the new system, but I don't think it's gonna be fully automatic. I'm sure that there's a process of mapping, um, data from the financial system into the open data system. So, I imagine there will be some redo there for IT. Sanford shaking his head, yes?
And, uh, when they, for that large fee, they charge us to come in and set that up, would that be part of their services to kind of help us get everything working that was working before?
I don't expect that it will be, it's not part of the scope of what we asked for. It was something that, with the current system was done in-house.
Okay, and then, um, would it, would it be possible to use this new financial system to help set up payment plans, for example, for people that owe fines or fees?
It might be possible, I'm not going to say it's not. That wasn't something we explicitly asked for in our scope. It's possible that, as we get down into the details with the systems that we're looking at, that they might offer that functionality.
Okay, thanks.
Charlie?
Yeah, um, Elizabeth, uh, you, I'm a little puzzled when you said you're working with two and a half people instead of three FTE. I look at the personnel, in the personnel numbers in, in the finance department here, and it, it doesn't really show a change. Says 12 and a half and staying at 12 and a half, so...
Right, 12 and a half is what we went to in this year's budget and we're continuing that next year. So, the year prior, we had three people working, and so in FY15, we had three people working in the front office, beginning in this fiscal year, FY16, we have two and a half.
Oh, okay, I, I don't see it in these numbers here.
Yeah, well, and part of that is that, I mentioned that we had a temporary position that became permanent, that wasn't reflected in our staffing levels before.
Oh, okay, so you've shifted some stuff around then?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Aaron?
How many, um, parking enforcement officers do we have? Is it two or three?
Four.
Four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we are fully staffed now, and they're very busy.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question for Elizabeth? Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Uh, we have community development next.
Good evening, here we are again, another exciting, and I've tried to present a short report for you this evening on community development. I realize we've done a lot of annual reports for you, so I'm gonna focus on the budget and spend a little bit of time on major accomplishments and goals for next year. I have a lot of the members of our department here tonight with me. From our management team, John Schneider, Brandon, Boies, and Lori Pearson are here, and Kelly Merkelsey does have a family emergency that prevents her from being here. I also have Natalie Kenny Marquez here. Um, Kenny, or Natalie is also a supervisor for the market and, um, works on marketing efforts with me and the administrative division, and Chris Marks is here as well. We do have a mission statement, it's a kind of a catch-all of, uh, types of things that we do in community development. Our mission is to maintain and improve the quality of life for Urbana citizens by providing programs of economic development, housing, planning, zoning, redevelopment, code enforcement, historic preservation, community block grants, among other things. And this is a handsome group of people that, uh, we enjoy working together, it's most of us, we're, we're able to gather for a nice shot, courtesy of Linda Trevina, who's a great photographer, and, um, can see, it's just a great, a great group of, of people with a lot of diverse skills, very busy group, too. This is, um, basic organization, um, we, counting the administrative division, we have five divisions, and we, we're at, uh, just shy of 25. We've been at 25 FTE for a number of years, and, um, it's spread across in your budget document, you're gonna see those staff spread across many different funds. So, there's a, kind of a simplified chart, and I did a more detailed chart for you, an organizational chart, and actually, it's, um, a little bit different from last year, I'll just point this out. Up here is where I, I put our, um, administrative division folks, and Natalie, um, who's here tonight, is now working directly with me in the administrative division, I'm the manager of that. Sukia Reed is our administrative assistant for the entire department and also for this, um, division as well, and we have a marketing intern, uh, who also works with the market at the Square Sterling Bullman, and he's situated there, and, uh, you'll see there's some changes also in grants management, I'll point out, we did a reorganization there, and, uh, you might recognize, uh, Don Ho is now our grants compliance specialist half-time, but he also works half-time in finance, so he was probably one of those .5's that Elizabeth was talking about, and you all know Matt Regic, and he has a different job title than, um, previously we had when Jenna Gonzalez was here previously. So, Matt Regic, uh, coordinates both the home and the CDBG grants rather than having one coordinator for CDBG and one for home. This reorganization was really pursuant to some recommendations that we had from HUD, but also to the reality that we're getting a little bit less, uh, fewer dollars from HUD each year in CDBG and home, so we've gone to that half-time grants compliance specialist. So, we've got one and a half staff doing, uh, what we were, previously were able to have two staff. I always like to mention that, um, one of the main activities that we do in community development is we serve our wonderful, uh, citizen boards and commissions, and we've got like an even dozen of these, and, uh, these are really, um, a big backbone for, uh, the good governance that we hear and have in the city of Urbana. We have, um, really blessed with a lot of activity, neighbors who are interested and engaged, and of course, there's many, many different organizations. These are the boards and commissions appointed by the mayor and the council that we provide the staff support to. Budget overview, um, as always in community development, to understand the budget, um, is a little complex because it is, um, spread out among so many different funds, and we do offer such a diversity of, of programs, and we have a number of funding sources, and we also have a number of revenue sources as well. So, um, pretty much takes scanning the entire budget document to get a sense of, um, the portions that community development gets involved in. Uh, but our operations are funded by general fund, of course, the TIFs, CDBG, home, and other HUD types of grants. Uh, we have other grants as well, and we've, uh, enjoyed some, uh, great success the last few years in attracting those grants, and we get direct revenues from permits, and they're significant, and I've got some, probably the happiest slide a little later in just showing how significant that can be, uh, from our building permits, um, rental registrations, our vendor fees at Market at the Square, program income, which is something we earn by providing services in our grants management division. Uh, we provide services for other governmental entities, and, um, this year, we're now starting the, um, processing fees for our new enterprise zone as well. I've already mentioned the two reorganizations when I showed you the flow chart. I've already mentioned the two reorganizations when I showed you the flow chart. A little more, our CDBG and home grants, we're continuing, but it's a kind of a little, a little pain each year and this year it was, we're projecting at two to three percent less. So we're looking at about 364,000 on the CDBG and 637, 638 if you round up on the home. Blight Reduction Program, that's continuing for its second year, that was a significant grant for us, $525,000 there. And we have, are understanding that there may be additional funds available for us. We've done really a very effective job on that, on that grant. And so IDA, who was a granter, has indicated that they would be interested in us applying for an extension for additional funds. We're also accessing funds through Habitat for Humanity, a great partner for us, in our housing activities and grants management through their attorney general's grant. I know there was a tour, a very interesting tour last, last week. It conflicted with another city meeting, but they were able to bring folks down from the attorney general's office and a lot of our community partners and tour the, the many different homes that have been funded by that grant. Construction and permit reviews and revenues are increasing and boy are they increasing and they did last year as well, but this, this past year, and I have calendar year numbers, which is what I had to look at for the permit reviews, is up even more. You heard last week about our Outtown, Art Town Grant from the National Endowment for the Arts, quite a coup. The only other recipient in Illinois was the Art Institute, so we're in pretty good company and that was a major grant submitted with the IMC, the Independent Media Center, $50,000. We're looking at reaching out to youth and promoting art as a vehicle for them to help us with the downtown and engage with youth in the reviews of the downtown using the IMC as a venue. So we've got a flavor of that at their event last week. We're attracting more sponsorships and donors for our public arts program. We're, get some news recently on actual purchases on behalf of the program of sculptures and we'll find out more. This year, we did, after five years, we did do a modest increase on the vendor fees for the farmer market, farmer's market. We are looking to bring more and more of those operations into self-sustainable mode and we did have communication with the vendors that there would be that increase. It's basically $25 to participate in the market for the vendors per booth. Good news coming out this week, announcements on double value support for our SNAP benefits at the market. And this is coming to us from Farm Credit Illinois and Agribank. So we're finding some great community partners who are helping to support our programs. First Federal Bank here in Urbana is also Bana supportive for our Realtors Bus Tour in providing the breakfast there and they've also chosen the Sprouts Program, which is our children's program at the Market at the Square, food, nutrition, education for children as a program that they would like to help to sponsor and support. More on the budget overview. Our general fund budget does have an increase and this includes the increase from the overall changes in the budget from the contracts and, and other changes such as that. And that's the amount. It's about 1.8 million up from 15, 16. But it also reflects relocation of several lines from the Economic Development Fund to the general fund and really trying to reform the use of that fund because it does not have a recurring revenue source. So we're bringing in some of those funds. It's a modest amount for the purpose of general marketing. And the Economic Development Fund will be primarily repurposed for Market at the Square. So when you look in your, your budget book, you'll see it looks a little different. It used to be a big catch-all for all kinds of programs in the city. And the problem with that from an accounting standpoint, again, it didn't have the, didn't have the revenue coming in each year. So this will really help us achieve much more clarity in the budget and also responds to requests from market vendors to understand a little better how our, how our budgeting works. I think it'll, it will really help. I talked about having an increased focus on overall city marketing by moving those marketing expenses from a variety of locations, including the TIFs and other funds, right into the general fund in the CD Administration Division. Natalie has brought some marketing materials. I know that you've probably seen these, but just to get a sense of what we do to, to promote the city. And this is something that we're interested in continuing to do and to expand because we believe that's a critical part of having a healthy and financially strong community. We've also added new line items in the Economic Development Division to reflect our new enterprise zone as well as a programming and marketing for Think Urbana, which is our branded aspect of the enterprise zone that will help promote new home construction in Urbana. I've already mentioned the changes in grants management, gone down to the half-time and grants compliance specialist and having one coordinator administer both of the grants. We've also held, if you recall, last year, we had reduced the code enforcement coordinator down to one half-time. We were reserving some of those funds for what we hope to be able to implement next year, which would be the automated system upgrades. We're in the process of reviewing the responses to the request for proposals. In addition to the housing inspection software that we began talking about quite a while ago, we are also now going to be looking at building permit software. The current building permit software that used, that we use to track all our building permits is actually no longer being supported. It's such an old program that the company that developed it no longer exists. So we have an orphan program and that is a concern. So we've gotten some information from the vendors about what would it take to update that. We are also very interested in automating our rental registration program. We have a retirement actually coming up. It's an opportunity from a staffing perspective to move away from a very labor-intensive process, process that we have now to kind of the modern age where people expect to be able to register online and to pay online and that is then dumped into a database and we can access that information instantly and immediately. And we do not have that, kind of that basic type of system for rental registration. You'll also see in community development that we do continue to fund our membership organizations, including UBA, EDC, Regional Planning Commission, COATS, and the Visit Champaign County partners. Moving on to accomplishments for 15, 16. Right up there is getting our enterprise zone approved by the state. It's competitive, it took a lot of work, it took a great effort in partnering with the other taxing bodies and we're super excited by it. And we're really getting into the promotion of Think Urbana, which we think is going to be a wonderful tool for building our tax base. Another big effort that's actually taken several years to get to this point with the Block North Project just north of the city building is our selection of a very talented developer from Indianapolis, very accomplished, TWG Development selected. They're hard at work, you know, working with the neighborhood and with other stakeholders to create a very substantial new project to be built in our downtown. A little bit later in the special meeting, we'll be talking a little bit about the redevelopment plan for the central downtown TIF. Again, a project that we've been working on for several months and contemplating for several years. And we are now in the early stages where we're going to be looking forward to having a public hearing and we've submitted a draft of the plan. We've done our best to incorporate the feedback that we've received so far, but that is a draft and we expect to receive plenty of additional helpful input. And again, we've worked really closely with our taxing bodies on identifying the projects that might be included in that redevelopment plan. Here's a figure that I, I'm just so pleased to see, 1.1 million plus in permit revenues, fees and fines and building safety. That's up 36% from 2014 and I looked back at last year's report and that had gone up 19%. So we are really, you know, we had a recession, we recovered, it was a little slow and now we're really, things are really moving in terms of new construction and investment throughout the city. Very pleasing. And this is even more impressive, the next one. Total of $65.36 million in new construction and remodels additions in the city of Urbana. It's calendar year, that's 116% over the numbers I had from last year. And the breakdown is about close to 18 million in new construction and huge reinvestment in terms of remodels and additions, 47 million. Now, a lot of that is the Carl activity because they've done very extensive upgrades, but there are a number of other projects as well and I have some images to show you that. Among those, very significant projects were the Campus Circle development on University Avenue that came in at a cost of well over 30 million. And then the 901 Western apartment project on Lincoln and Western Avenue, both completed in this year. And we've had numerous other commercial and rehab projects throughout the city. We completed, this is another long-term project, we completed the Gateway Shops. This was a long-term redevelopment goal of the city where we relocated the, the car dealer that was down there. We moved them up to O'Brien, we created that new auto mall and we had that really important corner at Five Points and it has continued, you know, year by year to expand, to add tenants, to add buildings. There's still another outlot that's going to be built on, but the remainder of the shopping center building is now complete. So that's great. And we continue to bring you development agreements for review and most recently, the Broadway Market, that's 401 North Broadway, Soccer Planet not too long ago, Stevens Building. Those all fit within the last fiscal year. The day-to-day redevelopment assistance, we worked with five businesses for new and remodeled facilities. We issued 16 small business grants for new businesses in Urbana. We issued sales tax exemptions with our new enterprise zone on seven projects. We cleared the Hanford Inn. That was on, you know, when we talk about projects, that was a problem for us. It was a problem. The hotel, the building, what to do with it, horribly expensive to demolish something like that, a real impediment to development. That is now cleared and ready to be redeveloped. That's a great accomplishment for the entire city to celebrate. I already mentioned the Art Town Grant. Also since last year, Highland Green, this is a long-term project that we've been looking to develop our Kerr Avenue site. We purchased it many years ago. We did planning, we did developer selection, we tried to find funding for affordable housing. It's very hard to fund those and we succeeded this year. We succeeded. They are going to be coming soon for PUD to get their zoning in place and we're going to see construction on that this year. Very exciting. Urbana Town Homes Aspen Court is poised for redevelopment. As mentioned earlier, we are working with the Housing Authority and with the owner of the Aspen Court Development. We have some developers that we've interviewed and we're trying to find a project pro forma that will work. So that's where we're at there and certainly will make a lot of project, progress this year as well. Under the BRP, Blight Reduction Program, the grant we received from IDA, we have, we have purchased and/or cleared 10 properties and there's more in the pipeline. This is, it's a lot of work and this is a lot of accomplishment to get that done in a short period of time. In the last year, we constructed and participated in six Habitat for Humanity homes, five new and one rehab, three more in the pipeline, just in Urbana. This was a project that was difficult, Barnes Mobile Home Park, but we worked with and with the help of the mayor's chief of staff, we worked with each and every one of those tenants, the residents, found them, other housing, and now the site is cleared and ready for our use for the Public Works facility. Plan cases have really accelerated. This isn't a complete list, but we've had over, over 25 planned cases processed this past year. Text amendments, home occupations, a number of other issues that we've dealt with, rezonings, variances, landmarks, three landmarks considered, design reviews, appeals, subdivision, the PUD. We've also had some plans. We updated a hazard mitigation plan. That's a plan that we do in concert with Champaign County. We're getting very close on the Bicycle Master Plan that will be coming to the council before too long. And we even updated our strategic plan for Market at the Square, working with our advisory group. Excuse me. So I have some images to show you. People love Urbana. We have so many people out there in the community who are helping us to do our important work and just promoting the community is a great place to live and work and play and have fun. So this is a photo that was provided by a group called Urbana Love. And they said, hey, this would be, this would be a nice photo. I just think it shows the community love for Urbana and I think that's important. So I wanted to start with that. There's some other kind of iconic views and some of these, you know, I've recycled, but I love these, I love these photos. I love our new park in the downtown. Urbanas are fun. Get out there, a lot of bicyclists, our wonderful Main Street buildings, just very special. Food, the food offerings in Urbana, it's so diverse. You're hungry, I'm sorry, but you know, you have so many choices of great food that you can get and these are almost all from downtown, I believe. New businesses, and these are just some of the recent ones. These are, these are fun, vibrant, interesting businesses and there's, there's many of them. So this is just a sampling. You know, we are, not only are these like economic engines for us, but these are fun things to do. These are things that, you know, help, help a healthy lifestyle and, you know, just really help, help our residents to enjoy life and enjoy our great community. Market at the Square, don't need to say much more about that. Number one market in Illinois, right? And it's very colorful and, and just incredibly popular. Our public arts program, you know, is a great addition to, to the community. Our Art Expo, a great, a great success. We're looking forward to doing that again. Our grants are so important to creating a vibrant community, sculptures, murals on glass. It's a big piece of the economic vibrancy in Urbana. Special events, these came up and came up earlier and I think they're a big part of the puzzle. I agree, it's really hard to separate out, you know, what does one event, what does that do to the economy as a whole, but you know, it adds to the vibrancy. It's, you know, without events, a place could be kind of boring. We don't want to live in a boring place. So it does add to the vibrancy. People come, there are visitors, the visitors spend money. That, that is true. Some events, they'll book a hotel, the marathon, that would be one and several of these others, I'm sure. We would probably see an uptick in the food and beverage tax, sales tax, hotel motel tax, ticket sales, the direct, you know, if there's a ticket sale, say for Pygmalion, that's, that's an input into the economy. You know, so it's part of, it is hard to separate. It is part of a package deal and there's a place, a role for the city in supporting some of these events. And I think that we're able to do a very careful job in sorting through these and providing, you know, the support might be like for the marathon, you know, here's some racking or here's some volunteers. We provide support in a lot of different ways. Block North Development, so next year at this time, maybe we'll be looking at some construction photos. Think Urbana, this is our enterprise zone program that is promoting new single and two-family development in our growth areas. This photo is from our Business and Development Luncheon, capacity crowd to find out about the program. And I love this photo. This was from, from one of our Realtors who participates in the Business and Development Luncheon. He made up these t-shirts that he was wearing and just talking about how our enterprise zone is helping him to sell lots and to sell new homes and, you know, it's just a great moxie and it's just, it's great to, we have a great community here, great people to work with. We also had a really successful bus tour not too long ago, so this is the beginning of something really exciting for us. exciting for us. Construction activity, here's Campus Circle, very, very nice, very significant project. Um, I've been mentioning, it's just amazing inside, and here's some, here's some images of the rooms and the commons areas, and it's, it's just, uh, would be a wonderful place for the students and others choosing to live there. Nine oh one Western, very, very handsome building, and, um, and here is one of their interior shots, they're along Lincoln and Western. Here's some of the other con, commercial construction, that new shopping center building at Gateway Shops. Uh, a major remodel on Vine Street for the Sherwin-Williams store, this is going up on Race and University, new, a new rebuild for a commercial building there at that location. Remodels, some of our institutions, so for Carl, um, there was a lot of activity on the ninth floor for the Heart and Vascular Institute, also a lot of interior remodeling for the, um, the North Tower as well. Saint Patrick's has had a major addition, and they're very, very proud to showcase this and have it, um, have it, um, blessed, I guess, actually by the Pope, but, um, also the bishop came to visit, and that was a very special event. And Crisis Nursery was able to, very far along in their addition, a really, really important provider of services for the community. Clark Lindsey Village, um, also continues with their projects, the pool is an interior, we don't have shots, but that's, uh, under, well under construction. This is one of the memory care units, the greenhouses, and, uh, of course, the villas completed construction as well recently. This shows some of the things we do in grants management, um, our access grants to provide people with grant assistance for mobility access. We have whole house rehab grants as well as emergency grants for things like roof repairs. This would be a great example of a Habitat for Humanity type of home, an infill home for Urbana, and our neighborhood cleanup, and that's coming up again, we do it twice a year, coming up again this Saturday in two neighborhoods for people who are resident of the target area, and we provide pickup service for seniors as well, so it's a lot of benefits for, um, our North Urbana and East Urbana neighborhoods that are in the target area. Here's the Highland Green Project, the nine veteran-supported housing units, nice low-density single-family, two-family, it's going to be a beautiful, beautiful project, same architect and developers, Crystal View Town Homes, just going to be great, and it's really going to help, uh, the people who will live there. Thirty-three units total. Uh, planning, uh, does a lot of different activities, the Bike to Work Day, a lot on historic preservation, I know Lori's got some announcements of some further events coming up on historic preservation, but these are two of our most recent landmarks, owner-nominated. So we've got one on Pennsylvania and one on Delaware shown here, and again, just recognizing and preserving our heritage. So what are our goals for the, for the next year coming up? Well, we want to continue to help build Urbana's tax base, and I know that's a common mission that we all have. We're going to market Think Urbana and our other programs. We would like to adopt a new Central TIFF District for, for our downtown, uh, will be de-tiffing substantial areas that will be beneficial to our taxing districts and our taxing partners, and we're going to be focusing our efforts on just a couple hundred acres in, uh, primarily in the northern part of the downtown to get the job done. We'd like to complete an agreement on the Block North project to get that going, start construction on Highland Green, work towards new ownership and renovation of the Urbana Landmark Hotel. That would be a big goal, a big benefit to the city and the community. We'd like to see redevelopment of North Crane Alley, the Blockbuster Corner, the Hanford Inn, and other sites. We'd like to beautify Cunningham Avenue and other areas as well. We have gotten a great start on the downtown design guidelines, we'd like to get those completed, continue our successes at the Market at the Square, we want to extend access to healthy food through SNAP, our double value programs, our partnerships, we want to expand our citywide marketing efforts, we'd like to develop those plans for redevelopment of Aspen Court and Urbana Town Homes with the Housing Authority, continue our collaborative problem properties efforts with the Mayor's Office, police, fire, public works, all working together to solve problems and legal. Uh, continue collaborative work with neighborhoods, and in particular, we're interested in doing a neighborhood survey and assessment for the King Park neighborhood, working in partnership with the Urban Planning Program at the University of Illinois as well as Habitat for Humanity. We also have continued work with Southeast Urbana Neighborhood Association pursuant to the assessment we did last year for them. We'd like to continue that Blight Reduction Program, finish up the grant and see if we can't extend it such as it's been suggested, and finally, um, there is an opportunity, uh, working with A A R P and the World Health Organization, to become an age-friendly community. And I think Urbana has a lot of, um, attributes that makes it one, that, uh, that people can age in place and, and be a great place for, um, our older residents, and this would be a goal that we would work with, along with the University of Illinois and the City of Champaign. We are very close on that subdivision code and manual practice. We know for bicycle-friendly status, gold is not enough, so, uh, we want to aim towards platinum, and with Charlie's help, we're going to aim for di, diamond. We'd like to automate those building safety systems, as we talked about. We have a building that we'd like to find a purchaser for if we're not able to use it. We'd like to improve the access and the use of the Boneyard Creek Improvement Project, you know, get some signage, let people know it's there, get some programming, it's a beautiful facility, and we'd like to spread the word. And we'd like to continue our public education on historic resources and recognition of our local heritage. So, uh, this is a management team, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Charlie?
Well, I want to talk about numbers since this is a budget, and so, uh, thank you for that information. But on page seventeen of the budget, uh, I don't understand the, uh, the negative balances in what I see are the federal block grant and home program type things, and is that because we pay the difference out of, or how does that all work?
Okay. Elizabeth's going to help, because some of this has to do with our, um, changes in accounting.
Actually, I don't know if it has to do with changes in accounting, um, but what it, what it is, is we have to spend the money before we can draw it. So there's always just a little lag time between when we spend it, and then we prepare the draw and draw the money and receive the money from generally the federal government. Um, there was, for a while, CD was short-staffed, and there was a longer lag time, but at this point, they're probably about as current as we're going to be, so.
And I would really like to thank Sophie and Don for helping us to sort through that backlog.
Okay, so, so it's basically because you're moved to, we're doing this on a cash basis, so we're not counting money until we get it.
Yeah, but I think, I think, yeah, I think that's been the case regardless, because with, with drawdowns like that, they, that probably didn't change.
Okay, so, we will get paid back for those, but in the next fiscal year, essentially?
Yes, yes, correct.
Bill Brown?
Um, could you, what was the increase for the booth rental at Market at the Square this year? Did you say there was an increase?
It went from twenty to twenty-five.
Okay, so a five-dollar increase, I first, I thought you said twenty-five-dollar increase, I thought, oh no, we're going to lose people.
No, no, and we didn't, um, have an increase for the community groups.
Okay, um, and then, I appreciate your emphasis on how festivals can make the place more vibrant, more, um, and I think part of the problem with trying to measure the effect of that is people will see something like, they come to Sweet Corn Festival and see a business that's open that they didn't realize was there or something, and then they may come back at, throughout the year, so you can't really measure something that, just based on the, you know, the impact of that day or that weekend, because it has a longer impact. Um, kind of along the same lines, um, I noticed that the art specialist is still in the TIFF budget, that's fifty-seven thousand, I think, plus the arts grants. I thought, um, before we had discussed trying to get that out of the TIFF budget, because we aren't quite sure if that's really a, a big economic impact.
That, um, that is something we weren't able to do this year, but we're going to work on next year, a number of changes to the, um, TIFF budgets, we did some, but we just weren't able to make all the changes this year.
So if the, if we approve the new Central TIFF, will the budgets from TIFF one and TIFF two get rolled into that somehow? Would that, when would that, what's the timeline for that? If it was approved, would it start January first, or?
The, um, yeah, I'd, I'm, I think I have to think through the, um, so TIFF one will expire the end of this year, and then, um, we might have some remainder of TIFF two and then the new, so, um, I think temporarily we would have still three TIFF funds. Is it, I'm, I'm looking over there, because I'm, uh, wondering if either Elizabeth or Brandon might be able to give a little more detail on what next year's budget might look like with the, with the TIFF funds?
The current proposed timeline for the establishment of the new TIFF would put the TIFF creation, I believe, in August. What that would do is it would coincide with the de-tiffing of substantial portions of TIFF one and two. That fundamentally changes the future scenarios for those TIFFs, because it eliminates a large amount of the revenue source, those, those parcels that are being de-tiffed. And then, as Libby mentioned, TIFF one expires at the end of the calendar year of 2016. TIFF two will expire in 2022, but the majority of its revenue will go towards Boneyard bond payments. Um, so these are all things that, you know, we're going to have to factor in and work closely with finance, uh, to transition through that period, so, um, it will require more thought and planning.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else have a question for Libby? Aaron?
So Libby, you showed a, a slide of, of you guys funding UBA and something else. I didn't get a chance to see all of the, the different, uh, agencies that you said you helped fund or either funded.
Yeah, it's kind of.
It was further back.
Yeah.
Could you just tell me what they are?
Yeah, it's like an alphabet soup, and I just threw up the initials without dwelling on them. Urbana Business Association, Champaign County Economic Development Corporation, Regional Planning Commission, COATs, which is the, um, Champaign-Urbana Urbanized Area Transportation System, and V C C, which is Visit Champaign County. So what these are, basically, membership fees for these organizations. UBA is a contract, um, our sponsorship of UBA, so it's a contract that the council sees each year. Uh, E D C, it's a membership, RPC's a membership that they split up among the different agencies. Um, Champaign, Champaign County, Savoy are all members, COATs similarly, and the Visit Champaign County, again, it's a membership that we, we review each year, and they happen to be housed in the CD budget, um, and we do work with, um, we do work with all of these groups as well.
And the events planner, is that person's job to plan events like the festivals?
Where do you see the events planner?
I thought I saw that in a, in the personnel for community development.
You know, a lot of staff do.
No, it wasn't events planner, I'm sorry.
Okay. A lot of the staff do event planning, but I think it's, it's spread out, um, it's really a skill that a lot of our staff need to have.
So all those things that we see, the Wine Festival, Sweet Corn Festival, are they much like Pygmalion, somebody else comes up with the idea and brings it to the city?
Well, there's some events that we do ourselves, the, um, the Boneyard, um, Area Event is one that we've done for two years, the Food Truck Rally is one that we do, Market at the Square we do, the Art Expo we do with the Arts Commission, um, those are probably the major ones. We're doing historic preservation events this month, because it's Historic Preservation Month, and the other events, I think, the folks come to you with requests, like Pygmalion and Folken Roots and UBA. Those would be, those would be the main ones that I think, you know, and, and times past, we had, um, Beer and Chili was one, um, years, years past that we used to do, we used to, Fluid Events, Head Events, um, but right now, I think it's the UBA events, which would be Sweet Cor, um, Sweet Corn and Uncorked, the Folken Roots, Pygmalion, those are the ones that are coming to mind.
So when I just think about the, the, uh, the diversity of our community and stuff like that, and I think about what you guys and what Bill has alluded to about, you know, we're not wanting to have like a dull community of places where we don't have a lot of stuff for people to do, I think this is why I harp on diversity, uh, being an, an important part of what we do, because, uh, when I think of the Sweet Corn Festival, or Boneyard Festival, or Wine Uncorked and things like that, these are not things that I think of my constituents racing to go to on, on a regular basis. So I think about an African Fest, or I think about something that is more culturally relevant to the broader community, so I was, that's why I was asking, how do we get something like that, um, that we could get, uh, that would be exciting for us as well. Um, but I, I'm, I'm learning a lot about what community development does, I appreciate the presentation. What's going up on, uh, university and race? What's going into that space?
Well, you know, I was thinking about that tonight, because part of the space is going to be a gaming hall, and part of it will be some other commercial use. So there's a development expectancy for that. I know they, uh, went through zoning, and, uh, we were going to check on the status of their permit. It's something that's been worked on for several years now, that particular project. Yes, they had some obstacles, and they persisted, and now they're, um, completing the construction.
Well, just if I could just finish for a second, uh, but, but things like, I just want to say that, uh, I do appreciate things that I didn't know existed, that I'm hopeful that we can share with the help of Dr. Underwood and others who come here on a regular basis. Mobility access, various different things that, um, maybe people could take advantage of those, uh, grants or those benefits that the city offers, um, and the neighborhood cleanup, the target areas, is, King Park is another place where we'll have the, the cleanup at.
So it'll be at the King School on Saturday?
And then my last point is that, we, you know, we've talked a lot about TIFF and blight and stuff like that, and I see, of course, TIFF being used in ways that I've already expressed, I won't get into tonight, that I don't necessarily agree with, but to raise art as something that would be removed from TIFF seems to be, it seems that art would be the thing that would help remove blight, I don't know why we would take that out of the TIFF budget.
Well, that, you know, that was a thought, it really helps to revitalize the downtown, and that's why we focus our activities in the downtown. Eric?
I, I just wanted to make a comment as the council representative to the Public Arts Commission, that one of the things that, um, I feel very good about with respect to our public arts activities is the diversity. I think they really do represent both the, the works of art, the people who create them, uh, they really do represent the breadth of, of, of our community, uh, very well, so I, I would, uh, I think that's one place where we're doing a good job in that respect.
Dennis?
And Libby, uh, as we evolve the, um, Central TIFF, if that's going to be its name, can you, uh, prognosticate what the, um, next potential step will be for developing one more section of the Boneyard? I know that we're paying back bonds with TIFF two, but if we do create a new TIFF district, is this going to allow us to? is this gonna allow us to, um, begin to do some design work possibly in exploring, uh, development of maybe, uh, section one or one of the sections which are less costly, perhaps, but more, uh, likely to be really a useful development for the downtown, the immediate downtown?
Well, hopefully, and we did include it, um, we asked for that to be included in the list of projects. So, um, it's sort of...
So it's on your agenda, kind of?
Pardon, pardon me?
It's, it's on your agenda, then?
Yeah, it should be listed as a project. Um, we did ask a consultant to list that. It's a, it's where you start. You know, it'd be great if we had a wonderful stormwater fee that could also help to, um, promote it, but, um, you know, perhaps those two funding sources. But it is, it would be very impactful, and it would be great to be able to, to do that as well.
And is there federal funding that the community development, uh, staff can look into that is for, uh, waterway beautification that might actually even be secured for the next step of the TIFF?
You know, there, there might be, um, group, like placemaking grants. They're, they're not really government grants, they tend to be foundation grants, might be eligible for that. Um, we tried to get some IDNR grants to help, and we didn't, um, didn't qualify because we don't have enough repeated flood damage in the area. We did try that a few years ago. Are there other, there might be other sources. Uh, it's probably worth taking a look and seeing, is there another department of the state or federal government that we haven't tapped and looking at the potential?
Yeah, and I bring it up because...
FEMA maybe? I, I don't know.
Yeah. I bring it up because, um, the, the development that we've done near the Broadway area has just been such a success, uh, in a permanent, wonderful improvement, and it would be great to, uh, try to at least initiate some planning for the next section. And I wonder if some of the subsidence that has taken place on the western edge of the creekway in this section, uh, might be, um, used as a stimulus for getting some, some kind of funds. You know, we have, we have examples of subsidence of properties. It's just outside the TIFF area, or maybe it's not actually. So, um, you know, and of course, I'm still thinking too of continuing to access property in the west sections past the TIFF district, uh, for, um, multiple access pathways too. That would be a wonderful, um, project for economic development.
Yeah, there, we're gonna see a property acquisition soon that will help. And then there, there is a development project that will, once things get sorted out between the property owners, that will give us some easements that will help as well. So we're making some progress, at least in terms of the land acquisition piece, or the easement acquisition piece. Um, but I think that's a good suggestion to look and see what, what else might be available out there.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else for Libby? Thank you very much, Libby, for your very thorough report.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we will move on. Unfinished business is the next item. I don't think we're gonna deal with any today. Reports of standing committees, committee of the hall, Bill Brown?
Yes, uh, we met last week, and we forwarded several resolutions and ordinances to council for approval. First is Resolution Number 2016 dash zero five dash zero two seven R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional and marketing agreement for Pygmalion Festival. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is Resolution Number 2016 dash zero five dash zero two eight R, a resolution amending the City of Urbana Municipal Electric Aggregation Plan of Operation and Governance.
I'll second.
For the committee, I move approval.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion?
Sir, everybody.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is ordinance number 2016 dash zero five dash zero three three, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 14, Section 14 dash seven regarding schedule of fees subsection A, liquor licenses.
Point of order. Yeah, I think those two, I, this item and the next item need to be, have 30 days before they can be approved, so they shouldn't have been on the budget, or they shouldn't have been on this agenda. So, uh, we need to move those to the right dates.
All right.
I think we already did that, right, in committee?
I think you did do that in committee. The, the correct date is, um, the plan is to approve them at a special meeting on June 13th.
Okay, so items number one C and D should be moved to June 13th, special meeting. So it will be, um, item E now, ordinance number 2016 dash zero five dash zero three five, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3.5, amendments to ambulance services ordinance. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah. Well, we all did receive, uh, I think this, we should just mention that we all did receive a, a two-page memo from Arrow Ambulance, which serves Carl Hospital, indicating that they have a semi, I guess they called it an independent, um, uh, budget from the hospital, and, um, different points. So I just thought it would be important to, you know, in fairness and opacity to, transparency, rather, to, uh, mention that we did get communication from them and input.
Okay, Bill?
Um, yeah, I think they pointed out that, uh, the high fees that were given as example from Peoria and Pekin were actually for franchises where it would be an exclusive contract for the ambulance carrier. So without that, we don't really have any comparisons that would be to raise our fee as high as any others. I think the others were all 500, 1,000, something like that. So I'm kinda curious how, what would, I mean, what's the city's obligation to provide ambulance service if we didn't have one? Or is that why cities are, um, giving ambulances extra services for not very high fees? Is because we have some obligation to do that? So if it, does anybody...
I think we want ambulance service, and some cities provide it on their own. It's a city service. We've had it provided by the hospitals. They have a separate budget, but I believe they're owned by the hospitals. Dennis?
You know, one thing that affects us is the fact that the ambulances are housed within city property in the, um, fire department. Now, if they moved out and housed themselves in their own facility, I could see having maybe a really good basis for making a change, but, you know, we're providing, uh, heat shelter and protection from weather to the units, and of course, it's very convenient for us, so that's a, a useful partnership. But you can't, they can't imagine that it would not come without some kind of reciprocity or payment.
Eric?
So I, I was persuaded by the discussion last week that the fee that we're suggesting, uh, which we're not actually discussing now, but it's, uh, sort of goes with it, uh, that the fee is, is reasonable, and it's a reflection of our expenses, but, um, but I think it would be very good for that argument, you know, or for the facts and the way that was calculated, uh, to be, um, uh, even though, you know, we approved it, uh, even after the fact, for that to be, um, put into a document. And it doesn't matter if public record, cause it would be in the meeting video, but it would be very good for that to be put into a document that could be shown to people and cited. Because the, um, I think that in the letter, uh, from Melissa Black, I believe it was, who was the, uh, uh, community relations person from Carl, there was not an act, exact, actual statement, but there was a suggestion that, that maybe this was, um, somehow aimed, you know, was somehow vindictively aimed at Carl. And, uh, I think that, um, I think that that argument is completely undercut by the calculation of the expenses, but I think it would really be good to have that in a document that we could cite.
Well, we do have it in the, in the document, so anybody who asks, um, that was in a memo from Elizabeth, right? She'll come up and... She calculated it, but was the memo from you, or was it from, um, the fire chief?
No. There, there was a memo from the fire chief on the ambulance ordinance, and we did the memo on the fee schedule, but neither one of those included my detailed calculations. So I can, I have that, and I can provide that.
Yeah, that, that would be very, very helpful, because this is going to be, uh, I can just foresee that this will be a public discussion about why we did that and how we could justify it, and I think that, I think that would be really helpful.
Charlie?
Well, I will point out that this is not the fee part of this whole thing. This is the, the amendment to the...
The training, right?
Services ordinance itself. So, the, the fee part will be a separate discussion when, on June 13th.
And we can have the documentation be as a section of that.
Right, and we, you know, we started, you know, like I said, you know, like you said, there's, we, we started looking at the reasons for it. It's lower than we could be charging, uh, and, and I think there are a lot of very justifiable reasons, you know, whether they think it's $6, or, you know, whether I think it's $6 or $8, I think it was closer to $8 by my calculations, and they think it's $25, it's still a small amount of money in comparison to the total ambulance call, cost. So, so it's, it's still a small number, uh, and, but, but this ordinance is just the ambulance services ordinance itself, so, which, which needed updating.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe? That motion carries.
Next is ordinance number 2016 dash zero five dash zero three six, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Sections 15, 67, and 118, possession of cannabis paraphernalia and penalty, reduction of fine for cannabis paraphernalia possession from $300 to $25. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is ordinance number 2016 dash zero five dash zero three seven, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Section 117, settlement of violations prior to suit being filed. Increase in time for settling violations from 14 days to 35 days with an extension of 28 days. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. Charlie, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, um, you know, we were very tired last week when we put this together and tried to get something done, and we rushed it, and now we have to unrush it. Uh, though, it doesn't take much of a fix, I think. I shared, uh, I, you know, we've seen a couple of memos. It's very difficult to, I think the biggest thing is the two-part scheduling that needs to be done with the, with the, with the court. And, um, you know, we can't do the level of services we'd like to do, but, in terms of working out payments and whatnot, but if we give, if we use a 60-day window, which is what I think ultimately we're going for, uh, I, I think I'd like to do that. We also have the issue of figuring out exactly what kind of wording and designing a form and all that, so I don't think we want this to take, and we wanna use up what we have without wasting a lot of paper. So I think the police department is also gonna need a little bit of time to figure this out. So I'm gonna make a, um, amendment here in a second, but I also wanna say that, um, I also discussed that, that we should review the fines that we have on a lot, on a lot of these things and, and look them over. It hasn't been looked at in a long time. It, it's a growth out of the traffic stop study, uh, where we, you know, we see the disparity in charges of, 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 of traffic tickets. A lot of those, we don't have the ability to, to, to deal with because they're state-mandated, but we can look at our own fines and, and look at those that, um, might have a disproportionate effect on, on, on those of, uh, less income ability. And so, uh, for that reason, I'm also requesting that as part of the traffic stop study work that Alex is doing with us, uh, that we start looking at the, that, that fine schedule. We'll, we'll be approving something come June, some, uh, June whatever, but we will be hopefully updating the fines themselves in July or August as, as we get to it later on, or I will encourage us to do that. Uh, I don't think we can have it ready in time for the approval of the fees themselves. So I would move that we drop the 35-28 thing and just go to a flat 60 days to make the payment, and that the, uh, that the effective date of this change be July 15th to allow for design, uh, order and ordering and paying of, uh, new forms.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll take that. I'll take the second on that.
Okay, we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed? That carries. And then we'll have, if the clerk could please call the roll on the amended, amended motion. Uh, Mr. Ammons?
Just wanna make sure I'm clear. So Charlie, I thought you said you were waiting for something else, and we're gonna vote on this now and then wait on the, the change?
Uh, no.
Implementation dates...
The, the implementation date is set for the fif, July 15th, so we can design new forms, uh, and with the 60-day thing in there. That, that we can do now. The fine schedule, though, will also need to be revised at some point. And so, uh, I don't know how fast we can address that. I think that's a little more complicated. We probably all have our own opinions on what should go up, what should go down, and so that's gonna take, I think, uh, take more discussion, uh, and something that we probably wanna work with Alex on, and the police chief, and others who are affected by that, that schedule. So that's not something we can do tonight. Um, so, uh, now, I know the tickets themselves, some of those charge, the fine schedule is in there, but hopefully, we won't print too many of new ones. Uh, we'll be able to turn around and, you know, when we use those up, print new ones with, with a corrected fine schedule later on. Jim's looking at me with a quizzical look.
You wanna say something, Jim?
Uh, not a quizzical look, just to clarify, uh, for everyone's knowledge, the ordinance that Alder Person Smythe has moved to amend by dropping the 35-28 and substituting that with 60 days to pay a fine, and then the effective day, completely separate issue than the issue of what fines, uh, you know, whether or not to adjust certain fines.
Sure.
Okay. Aaron, did you wanna say something else?
Well, I understand that it is a separate issue. I find them very connected in that the issue that we looked at, that we talked about, brought to our attention that the amount of the fine was as cumbersome in this process and prohibitive in this process as the timeframe. So an individual, like the, the gentleman who brought this issue to us, even at 60 days, he wasn't gonna be able to pay the amount that was there. So I'm just, you know, if we're talking about the fines are going to be looked at, you know, relatively quickly, and we are confident that those fines will be lowered, then that's one thing. Otherwise, this is our opportunity to offer a window of opportunity for the poorest of the poor in our community to pay, um, a, a fine. Because I don't think a hundred and sixty-five or a hundred and eighty-dollar fine for a person who is, you know, the lowest earner in our community is still gonna be cumbersome, still gonna be, uh, burdensome.
Charlie?
Yeah, I, I totally agree. I, I wanna get it, I wanna get the fine schedule visited and adjusted as quickly as possible, but... visited and adjusted as quickly as possible, but I think this we have before us right now, the fine schedule is out, the fines are, the fine schedule is out there for review, so we have, you know, we can't do anything with that really anyway, and we need to have a separate discussion on that, you know, you know, I could, I could have easily come up with a list of my suggestions for tonight, but I don't think that would have been fair to everybody.
So, let me make a suggestion on this, if I may.
Mr. Jacobson?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The, uh, so I, I, you know, we've passed this thing, I guess it's no longer on the floor, so I can't amend it.
No, no, we didn't pass it, we're talking about voting on it, we passed the amendment-
Okay.
And then the, then we're going to vote on the amended motion.
Okay, well, let me suggest another amendment, and this amendment would be, there is a section in here that begins, notwithstanding, it, it, let's see, where is that, notwithstanding the foregoing, blah, 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 and this has to do with the requesting of the twenty-eight days in addition to the thirty-five. So what I would like to do is replace that, that section which talks about the, the, the two periods with, notwithstanding the foregoing, a person served with a notice to appear may request an arrangement for installment payments rather than being required to pay a lump sum, and the director of finance shall have the discretion to grant or decline the request for such an extension. There's actually just one sentence now that I'm substituting, the sentence that begins notwithstanding, and there I'm, I'm placing the ability of the person to request an arrangement for installment payments, so that would be, that would be, that request would be made prior to actually having to appear and could forestall the appearance. So, so that perhaps would deal with Aaron's concern, and it might be, and it might also prevent having to go to the court appearances and the complexity of dealing with that.
I think Jim Simon has a comment on that.
I think that creates the same complexity at several levels that any kind of a payment plan, an institutionalized or ordained payment plan would cause. The, probably the biggest problem that I see is when an NTA is issued, the officer has to put a court date down.
Mm-hmm.
Due process, constitutional due process requires that the officer give the alleged offender violator, ordinance violator, notice of his or her opportunity to be heard if he or she wants to contest a ticket.
Mm-hmm.
If a plane, excuse me, a payment plan is arranged, then one has no idea when the court date would be, because, let's assume the alleged offender fully complies, you know, signs the bottom of the NTA, pleads guilty, and fully complies, then with the payment plan, whatever it is, could be the sixty days or could be five years, whatever it is, I'm just making up hypothetical lengths of time, then there's no issue, because the payment plan has been complied with, just like paying off a fine with a single payment, and there would be no action filed in court, so that's no problem. It's if the payment plan is violated, now somebody has to go back, track the payment plan, and there are two approaches, and I believe I discussed one last time. Because it's a payment plan, it's a contract, it's a settlement agreement, a payment plan is a settlement agreement, so now, when there's a default, the city, Michelle Brooks, our Assistant City Attorney who handles ordinance violation court, would not be able to go into ordinance violation court, but would have to go into small claims court, and that would be not only more expensive for the city, but certainly, if not more expensive, far more cumbersome than the offender, because a small claims court, unlike ordinance court, meets probably every day, so the court can schedule whenever the court wishes, you know, matters involving small claims. Ordinance violation court meets once a month, an action is filed, everyone shows up the next month, hopefully, and then if, if they could handle small claims, which ordinance court does not, you know, then, then there would be a matter, there could be a trial, there, there are procedures allowable, and it's not a, believe it or not, it's not that simple of a process for a hundred and fifty-dollar fine, and most individuals would not know how to handle a small claim, processing a small claim in terms of defending it, they would need some help somewhere along the way. There's no right to counsel, in either case, there's no right to legal counsel unless they want to pay for it, and so if they can't pay for the ticket, it's not likely they can bear the burden of legal counsel further. There are a lot, potentially continuances in ordinance violation court which would drag the defendant or the alleged, you know, the defendant into court multiple times, and I don't think the city wants to burden an individual with having to leave work or leave family to show up multiple times in a small claims court. But the biggest problem I see is the notice situation, and a notice to appear is very much like a summons, you are to appear on this date, at this time, in this courtroom, and ordinance violation court meets regularly, just once a month, for the city of Urbana Champaign, I think they go more frequently, they have more tickets.
But, but I'm a little bit puzzled, because as the ordinance was written, this, the person requested the extension after being served with a notice to appear, so-
No, as the ordinance is written, that reflects the thirty-five slash twenty-eight, which is something you all, I believe it was Alder Person, Marlin, towards the end of last week, recommended or moved and all, and obviously I provided a memo which indicated why that one would be equally difficult, because when an officer issues an NTA, is it going to be for the end of the, sometime after the thirty-five day period, or sometime always after the thirty-five plus twenty-eight? The other problem with that issue is how do you, what metric is the city going to use to determine who gets and who does not get a twenty-eight day extension? And now we've got to develop rules and regulations, and what happened internally within the city, and what happens if there's a denial of a request for twenty-eight days, or is it going to be across the board? And that's why, after looking at it and talking with the mayor, unless we're willing to provide the metric and then provide people with the right to challenge a denial of the extension, why not just give them the full sixty days?
Okay, so, so, so you actually, I mean, the document that was in front of us actually contained something that was really unworkable.
Right, but I, I put it in there because that's what the committee recommended, go to the council for approval, but that's also why, in collaboration with the mayor, we prepared the memo that was sent out, I wish I was able to get it out to you sooner than Friday afternoon, Friday morning, excuse me, Thursday, it's just a matter of getting it done in time to include in the packet, and I couldn't do that.
Is it possible in your mind, or not possible, to provide an opportunity for installment payments, you know, without requiring a court appearance?
Without what?
Without requiring a court appearance. Is it possible to make such an arrangement without-
If the city, actually, no, because of the requirement of due process, unless you want people to go into small claims court. No, I'm not talking about, you're talking a pre-suit settlement or plan, is what you're talking about.
Yeah, there's no way to write the ordinance that in such a way, and establish a process in such a way that somebody, like, you know, the person whom Aaron is talking about, who couldn't possibly pay within sixty days, let's say it's a very low-income person and faced with a, I don't know, a five-hundred-dollar fine, there's no way for that person to arrange for an installment payment without first appearing in court.
Language-wise, we can draft anything you want, as a practical and potentially serious legal matter, I don't see how. The reason is, if they breach the settlement, they cannot, they have to, it, the whole process starts with the issuance of a notice to appear, there's no court appearance or no court proceeding yet. Let's, let's assume for the moment it's sixty days and not the current fourteen days. At the end of sixty days, if an individual has not settled their ticket, and it's one of the tickets that can be settled, finance will send us a list of those individuals who did not settle their ticket, legal will initiate court proceedings, and then it works its way through court, and there's a chance to settle in court. You're not talking about that, though, you're talking about pre-suit. The problem is, is the officer has to put a time and date for a court appearance, and if there's a payment plan, that officer doesn't know at the time he or she writes the notice to appear, that the offender may or may not need a payment plan, so the officer can't put a time and a date, so that notice to appear could be challenged as being defective notice to appear in court, because there is nothing filled in in that blank, or those blanks. Everyone who is charged with some kind of an offense, whether it's a major crime or an ordinance, a simple ordinance violation, now a twenty-five-dollar paraphernalia ordinance violation is entitled to notice and an opportunity to be heard and to raise a defense of he or she wants. If they are not given a date and a time to appear in court, they are not given, you know, their due process notice, which is the opportunity to be heard. They don't know if they have an opportunity to be heard until they violate the payment plan, which could be a year down the road. That's not an ordinance violation, that's a contract violation which would throw it into small claims court, completely different process. And so now, the Assistant City Attorney for practical ma- as a practical matter, would have to go over to small claims court, sit there possibly two or three hours while the judge goes through a lengthy call, including credit cards and all the rest of it, and she's sitting there with one case, a payment plan, breach of contract, and I don't think that's an efficient use of resources, I think, you can pick a longer period than sixty days to, you know, settle a fine, and I, I think, but I'd have to leave it up to Elizabeth, that they could make interim payments through the sixty days, but I, I can't bind her to that, but a formal payment plan which goes be, where you don't know if there's going to be a violation of that plan or not, no, I don't think legally you could do it, unless you somehow craft, craft a far more extensive ordinance which gets into, violations of payment plan shall constitute ordinance violations, but now we're back in the same cycle, now we're settling a settlement. Doesn't make sense.
Let me see if I can cut to the chase here. Mayor?
Charlie?
Yeah, um, the idea of the sixty days was also to, to, you know, remember, to work on some wording and stuff, explaining to people how to go pay the ticket and whatever, the information on the back, and in there was going to, you know, be working with Elizabeth on, on exactly what kind of things they can do informally, especially since they don't have, you know, the staff and, and, and the software to do this, but they can handle some amount of partial payments up to and including that sixty at the day in their work process, so that helps alleviate one piece of it, and I, I wish, Aaron, I'm trying to take my time here, wait for Aaron to get back here, but I think the real issue is that we just need to address the size of the fines as quickly as possible, and, you know, I've got a, I've got a word document with all the fines in there, which I almost shared around, I, I've already marked it up with my own suggestions, and I was almost ready to send that around, and I think, you know, I, I will send it around now, and we just should try to get to it as quickly as we can, working with Alex and the rest of you and the, and the chief to, to get that done. So I, I think that if we just simply try to work quickly on the fine schedule, plus let Elizabeth work out some of the details and wording on how to pay with, you know, pay in installments within sixty days, then we, we get most of what we want without burdening staff and without creating a really complicated system. So I would urge, we'll just vote on this for now, and I will try to work as quickly as possible to, to keep the fine reduction idea moving to us so that maybe we can have it ready with the rest of the fee schedule.
Okay, we have the amended motion, so we have sixty days, and that was the amended motion, so that was approved, so let's vote on the amended motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And last from the committee, we have ordinance number twenty sixteen dash zero five dash zero three eight, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter one and Chapter three, notice requirement for hearing on class G two liquor license application and fine for Basset violation. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Brown, seconded by Roberts, any discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Just, just wondering if I could get clarification on, you said a lot of the notices were returned, is that, how are they, are they addressed to resident or are they addressed to an individual?
They're, well, I think to an individual, right? The notices go out, the question is, do the notices have an individual's name or just an address, like apartment two, twenty-three?
Can we put or current resident on there to avoid getting back?
Again, I, I don't understand the question.
This is the notice for the G two liquor license, it has to go out to everybody within five hundred feet currently, and we're going to change it to two hundred fifty feet?
I, honestly, I don't know how the list is prepared, I think it's probably done with G, GIS.
Okay, here's Libby to explain it.
So we, um, work with the mayor's office and we do it the same way we do zoning notices, we, um, send to the owner and to the resident, so we kind of double it up, so I believe that's what we're doing for these, but the five hundred feet makes for extremely huge long list, but this is not something, um, the mayor's office doesn't have access to the GIS that we do, so we provide that for them.
Okay, um, my question was, why are we getting them back? Should they, could they say or current resident on there so that if somebody has moved, it'll go to whoever the current resident of that apartment is?
I suppose we could try that, but we, you know, we do get returns.
Okay, I guess, I mean, if there's nobody living there, maybe they'll return them.
Chris or Lori probably do some of this noticing, do we, don't we get a lot of returns regardless?
Yeah, I mean, don't you, you do some of these, you generally, so you think you can react to some of what you suggested?
Well, thank you. I'll answer your question. We start with going with the property owners, and I manually go from there in, in a radius of five hundred feet from the property lines, if it's obvious that the property is not, is likely not owner occupied, that tenants occupy it, for, I create a new, I create a mailing listing to the owner, but then go back to the original address and do one for the, either occupant or resident or tenant, so I, we try to, in areas where there are heavy concentrations of apartment buildings or rental units, we try to do both, we try to do the property owner and the, the resident who resides in that, that building. We have two set, two different layers, or two different sources that we could use, one is for strictly the property owners, the, from the taxpayer roles, the other is for something that we've created that Champaign County GIS has, which is-
It's the address points file?
Yeah.
Okay.
The problem with address points is- The problem with address points is that it does not have the owner occupation, the owner information or the tenant names. It's just a general list of...
It's the addresses, like something, apartment D, such and such, yeah. Well, yeah, so it seems like that should work, and so I'm still confused why those would come back if it says occupant, address D, and nobody lives there, the mailman should still deliver it there, right?
It's still, it's an issue we have with demolition notices or with, you know, we pull lots, lists for lots of different purposes, for notices for public hearings, and understanding why they come back is still a...
Okay.
I can't speak.
Maybe we can look at the details.
Yeah. It's to make it consistent with what they do for CD, which is 250 feet. We had 500 feet, so we just wanted to lower it.
Yeah, I'm actually okay with the 250 feet, but I'm concerned that a lot of them are coming back, maybe, I mean, obviously, there's a big turnover, so if for some reason they're going to a resident's name or something, and that resident doesn't live there anymore, I'd be worried that, you know, we shouldn't get them back, it should just be delivered. Whoever lives there, lives there and should see the notice.
I'm thinking back, I think perhaps the instance where we had the most returns was a strange instance where, and my memory is fading a little bit, but I believe the property owner had somehow changed the addressing but never notified us. So we had data that we thought was correct. However, that is not what was said on the building and the, you know, apartment numbers. So I think in that instance, it was perhaps an aberration, and not necessarily we get that many back in a typical mailing.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Reports of special committees. Bill Gray, Public Works Director. Do you have a special committee you want to talk about? Oh, all right. You want to talk about one of the resolutions? Okay. We will move to new business, resolution number 2016-05-029R, a resolution to authorize execution of an easement agreement between the City of Urbana and the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for the MCOR project for the installation of streetlights and related equipment along Green Street between Wright Street and Lincoln Avenue. Public Works Director, Bill Gray.
Thank you. This is one of the last details that we have in securing all the easements we need for the Project 1 between Wright Street and Bucy Avenue, and this is an easement with the University of Illinois, as stated, to place streetlight poles, a traffic signal controller at the southwest corner of Lincoln and Green, and also a streetlight controller on the north side of Green Street, a little bit east of Matthews. I direct your attention to the easement agreement itself, and there's some typo changes I'd like just to bring to your attention. On page two of the easement agreement, item three, there's two Gs. The second G should be H. So on page two, the second G should be H. And then on page three, paragraph number eight, about halfway down, the word license should be changed to agreement with a capital A. And five sentences from the bottom of that paragraph, there's a license C, that should be struck, and it should be grantee. So those are some changes that don't change the substance, but just some typo.
Could you say what line the first correction is on, please? I didn't see it.
The second G on page two should be an H.
No, but item eight, you were talking about?
Oh, certainly. Okay, eight, paragraph eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the eighth line, the word license should be agreement. And the eleventh line, license C should be grantee.
Okay. Thank you. Any other changes for them?
Otherwise, happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Did you have a question, Aaron?
Motion.
Okay.
For approval.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Then we have ordinance number 2016-05-039, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Urbana, rezoning a .81 acre parcel at 805 North Lincoln Avenue from the B1 Neighborhood Business Zoning District to the B3 General Business Zoning District.
Well, Chris is setting up, if I could just take a step back, I had a quick report of officers. Because this is Historic Preservation Month, we wanted to make sure you were aware of several events that are coming up. I think we've announced them before, but to make sure you know about them, this Wednesday, a lecture at the library from 7:00 till 8:00 called Good Form: Understanding Vernacular Building Types. Then once you learn a little bit about that then, you can take a walking tour this Saturday. It leaves from the market at the square at 10:00 AM to do a walking tour to see vernacular building types in historic East Urbana. And our final event is Wednesday, the May 25th, from, again, 7:00, 8:00 PM at the library, The Hidden History of Urbana's Antebellum Houses. So invite you all to attend. Thank you for that.
I'll try to keep this, I'll briefly describe the property and the proposal by the applicant and all the statements. Commission findings were, and go from there. So the property, it's a request for a rezoning for a property at 805 North Lincoln Avenue from its current designation of B1 Neighborhood Business to rezone it to B3 General Business. Subject property is zone B1. It is on 805 North Lincoln Avenue, about 0.8 acres. It is surrounded by mostly single-family homes. It's, to the north, there is an R5 property with an apartment building, also across the street, a smaller apartment building zoned R5. Most of the single-family homes surrounding the subject property are zoned R2. There is a property just to the west of the subject property that is zone B1 as well, which houses a building used for construction contracting by a small business owner. The future land use designation for the properties to the north and to the south is community business. To the west and of there, further on is residential, as it is to the east as well. The applicant is requesting to rezone the, or to rezone the property. They will be using the existing building and off-street parking spaces for a principal use gaming hall, as well as preserving the use of vacant office space for, I'm sorry, preserving the use of office space that currently exists there. Right now, it is used as a video store, which the applicant would plan on closing, and there is a medical prosthetics business as well. The physical state of the building would remain the same. The Plan Commission had a meeting last week on May 5th. The Plan Commission decided that rezoning from B1 to B3 would be, would create for, would create a business district with a lack of transition, with a lack of a transitional buffer between lower-density and lower-intensity single-family homes, any much, any property with a potential for a much higher intensity of use or building form on a B3 property. There are many uses that are permitted for a B3 that are not necessarily permitted for It also found that the description of community business within the comprehensive plan, description is, "Community business centers are designed to serve the overall community as well as the immediate neighborhood, but are less intense than regional commercial centers. Located along principal arterial routes or at major intersections, community business centers contain a variety of businesses and service uses at scales and intensities that make them generally compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. They encourage planned unit developments to create a variety of uses and to transition intensities to adjoining neighborhoods." It was decided that the B3 district was not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood because of the, as we mentioned, the lack of transition, as well as, it's not located along a principal arterial, it's a minor arterial, and that the community business designation within this particular neighborhood did not, was not intended with a B3 zoning designation in mind. Furthermore, the description of B1 neighborhood and B3 neighborhood, as provided in the memorandum, basically describe the B1 as a more limited size and of intensity of use and had different scope of services provided as opposed to the B3, which provides for a wider range of uses, a wider possible intensity and use of the property. Lastly, the Plan Commission found that the proposal did not generally conform to the LaSalle criteria for suitability of zoning for that particular property. The Plan Commission voted unanimously with nine As to zero As to forward the case to the city council with a recommendation of denial for the proposed map amendment. Staff concurs with this recommendation. The council still has three options of voting for approval, approving a portion but not all of the area, or an alternative zoning for a lesser intensity, or a vote for denial. So the applicant is not here tonight. Did you have any questions for me regarding the...
I think it's been pretty clear. Anybody have a question, or you want to just make a motion?
I have a question.
Dennis?
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like it's pretty clear, but there's also on this property, but I guess it's not the, the applicant, did he buy the entire building, or is he hoping to just use a section of the building as a leasing?
The applicant was working in coordination with the property owner, so he would, the property owner indicated that they would still be owning the building in coordination with the applicant, who would be leasing the space.
And then there is also an additional, you could call it an outbuilding on the lot to the west, and that's not involved, I don't know what that building is used for, is that currently...
That was the construction contracting business.
Okay, right. I would just like to say that, that, you know, we've had individuals who come and wanted to rezone sections of the property on the block south of this, and, you know, these were sensitive questions because they relate to the stability of the neighborhood itself in the context of, you know, a zoning change. And we've been pretty sensitive about maintaining the buffer between the community housing and the commercial use, and because B1 has been so appropriate in the past for this, and because also, under B1, conditional uses allow a wide range of options for a person who might want to do a food service, who has food service background, it seems to me that would be likely that it could still be used by that individual for a very useful purpose, using conditional use in B1. So I want support to change.
Okay. Charlie, you have a question?
Yeah, very good question. Then I have a question. How do I proceed? You know, it just strikes me that if you go further north on Lincoln Avenue, there are much better locations for something like this. And, you know, I can think of an empty gas station, you know, a little Quickmark thing there that would probably work pretty well. So, you know, I just have to wonder why, why this particular location and not something further north where, where you have hotels and apartment buildings and other B3-type businesses and zoning. So, you know, that, you know, that right there says to me that, you know, a lot. I looked at the zoning for the Learman neighborhood, and, you know, there's B3 zoning on Washington, but that was buffered by apartment complex and, and, you know, there's a sort of a zone there that extends down to the little strip mall and stuff. And so, and there's a, you know, there's a AT&amp;T station there and a electric substation. So you can sort of see B3 there while this is in fact a neighborhood. So my question is, how do we proceed? Do we, do we move this thing and then vote no, or do we just simply move to uphold the...
Move to deny, right?
Move to deny, is that the best thing? That way, we just all know what we're voting?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll move to deny this zoning change.
Okay. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
We're voting...
You're voting to deny.
We're voting to deny. Okay, yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we're down to appointments to boards and commissions. I would recommend Sustainability Advisory Commission Stacy Gloss, Public Arts Commission Janelle O'Turton, and Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals Daniel Harmon.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Jacobson. Oh, you're right. I don't have that on my...
I don't have it.
I don't have that on my...
It's on the appointment list, but not on the agenda.
Well, that's nice. Hmm.
You may want to bring that one back later.
Okay.
Yeah, because it wasn't noticed.
It wasn't noticed, huh? It was put on there. Well, we'll bring it back. Sorry about that. I was gone. I was in Boston. Let me see, we've got everything else? One, two, three. All right. Okay. Was there a motion? Oh, there was a motion. Ammons and Jacobson. All right. On those three. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Now we are down to discussion, a moratorium on gaming hall licenses in Urbana by Dennis Roberts.
Yeah. I won't take a long, long time to explore this. In our discussion about the different licenses that were coming up, one or two councilpersons mentioned in a discussion that maybe it was time to think about, you know, holding back now and kind of reassessing what we've got as far as the G2 licenses. And there are some reasons that it seems to be reasonable to me. I guess, you know, there's a point where maybe we reach a saturation point at this time, that we feel like we have enough gaming halls evenly distributed throughout the community, and should we now perhaps consider that, you know, holding off on allowing more licenses? And we can just determine whether we want to take a year to look at this, or eight months, or whatever it might be. But I think, I think it's time to have a conversation about whether that's useful to us. And to that point, I asked Community Development to prepare a map showing where all the gaming machines are now installed and allowed. So you've been distributed, that map has been distributed to you, and we see, also there's a list that comes with the map, and we see that we've got one, two, three, four, five gaming halls, many of them, a large number of them on Philo Road already, one on, you're in Cunningham Avenue, one on University, and one on Broadway. No, not Broadway. Anyway, there's five of them. And we have numerous G1s, which actually allow gaming to take place, but there's a provision that it has to take place in an establishment that basically is serving this public food. So, so there's numerous opportunities to... So, so there's numerous opportunities to, to do video gambling, and we've heard now from community members, especially in the Washington Learman area, of a concern about the effect of having yet another one in their community, in the heart of their community, and, and some concern is being brought to my attention, certainly from my ward. So I'd like to just have a, get this consensus of, of the city council that, have we reached saturation at this point? Do we still prefer to allow more gaming facilities to be opened in Urbana?
I, I would like to just comment that we do have a limit, maybe we need to calculate what that limit would be, but since we have drawn these zones of 500 feet, that is a, is a real physical limit on how many could be in the city. And when people say we're at the saturation point, I would point out that we are far lower per capita than the city of Champaign, and way, way far lower than the city of Springfield. And I also want to say that the gentleman who wants to have a license on Washington Street bought a property next door that historically has been very troublesome to the city. So I think he's a good businessman, and he owns one of these establishments in another county. So I understand that people don't want it, they think, well, people shouldn't be gambling, or people shouldn't be drinking alcohol, you know, we don't, we can't control individuals' behavior, but I think that we have businesspeople that have spent a lot of time and are willing to invest a lot of money, and it's a legal operation, because the state of Illinois has made it legal. So that would be, I think, something that needs to be considered as well. People might want to have a grocery store move in, but is there a grocery store that is going to move in? And so this is something that this gentleman is willing to invest in, and I think we should also consider him.
Well, actually, I'm not trying to pin this on any particular possible next application. I'm trying to make this like a general comment. And as far as like particular decisions, I did ask the city attorney if it was possible to, is, what would a moratorium be appropriate to consider, and my understanding is that, Jim can actually comment on that if he wants to, but it's under like one way that the city council can decide about appropriateness of location, is just like we had done here currently in the zoning case, that we consider the particulars of the application, and we have the right to either grant or do not grant any particular license to the city, and that it is not a, we're not obligated in any way to, to grant an undesirable license, no matter how many assumptions the owner of the property may have, have had in his own mind about future use. Did I more or less summarize that properly?
Yes.
Partly.
Partly. I mean, I could read, I could read a document that you sent me if I.
Yeah, very simply, the way the city has structured its liquor licenses, all of them, they are capped at the number that are currently issued in each classification, including the G1 terminal licenses, as well as the gaming license, and all the other kind of liquor licenses. That is done so the city can consider each license. Nobody has a legal property right interest in an application for a liquor license. So the council is free to decide whether to increase the number of liquor licenses. In practice, the way it operates is somebody wants a liquor license, they apply for it, it comes onto our agenda, but the actual action you are taking is to increase the number, you know, let's say it's one applicant, say it's a restaurant, they're going to, you're going to increase the restaurant liquor licenses by one. That's really what your vote is, not to necessarily approve, you know, Joe Smith's application, but obviously you are in effect looking at, at that. So it is a much more defensible position if you operate from a cap, rather than saying, we're going to approve 15 G2 licenses so far, what is it, five have been issued, you know, applicants would have an easier time challenging, why did you grant that one versus this one, when you've got them available? And so throughout, as far as I know, for quite a long time, long before I got here, the city would cap them. How you choose to determine them and a lot of the other discussion probably was not part of my opinion, but.
Yes.
What you're saying is, you know, conceptually accurate, you've capped them.
So then my comment is that, of course, there are, there's two kinds of gaming establishments that we allow. One is a G1, which is associated with also food service. I can't remember if it's 80% of the income has to be food service and 20% is gaming income. I can't remember, there is some kind of like cutoff. The G2 is just dedicated entirely to gaming. So these are, well, it's a liquor license, okay, they're selling liquor, but they're also mainly, there's a different purpose for creating these particular kinds of liquor licenses. So my question is, do we, are we curious and are we interested in having a moratorium, or do we want to continue to decide cases as they come up?
Eric?
So my thought would be that we can, I'm really in favor of assessing how these are working, what measurable impact they may have on the neighborhoods that they're in, how much revenue is coming from them. Anything that we can learn about how they're doing, I think is a good thing. Sounds to me as though it would be a, a great project for a sociology student, but the, but in the meantime, I mean, we do have a, we do have a system that works, the one that we're using now, and each case, I think, is different, because each case is being placed in a different sort of neighborhood, or a different business district. So I, I think it is appropriate to continue considering them in the fashion that we have been considering them up to now. And I think it is important, Jim, I want to, I just want to clarify, you, you said specifically that no individual has a presumptive right to a liquor license, so that, so, so we're not laying, so suppose somebody buys a property that, and the G2 activity is consistent with the zoning for that property, but we were to decide just based on judgment about what that would do to the neighborhood and influence, most likely by the neighbors, that doesn't open us up to any reasonable, I mean, anybody could sue us for anything, but, but that, that somebody is not likely to prevail in a lawsuit on that basis, is, am I right?
You are correct, because the way it is currently structured, the increase in the number of licenses issued in a category is a legislative function, and municipalities have much greater latitude insofar as why they choose to adopt or not adopt legislation. If you get into an administrative process where you're actually weighing the merits of the applicant, because there are open liquor licenses available, that's more like an administrative function, and now you've got a due process issue and all. So the way you're explaining it, as currently structured, you're right, there, an applicant has no property right, that's how we describe it, in an application.
So that prevents me or any of my colleagues from falling into the David Thies trap that, that had to do with the historic preservation event.
Wait, say that again.
Well, I, it's a long story, we were all there. There, there was a historic preservation, there was a demolition.
Yes.
Thing, and I had, and I had stated very early on that I opposed the demolition, but then it became a historic preservation thing, because I had opposed the demolition.
The one on Elm Street, as I recall.
David, David, you know, jumped on me for that.
Yeah, I'm not, as I say, I'm not sure how that relates to the liquor license.
Oh, well, the question is, well, so for example, there might be one or more of my colleagues who has expressed an opinion about a particular G2 at a particular location, but the way that our process and our ordinance is established now, that would not preclude that individual from voting on it, is that correct?
No, the individual, I mean, I don't know what you mean expressive. An individual's consulting, or asked a question, or answering a question from a constituent, you know, who is expressing concern, the, the concern, in terms of the preservation thing, the concern was the involvement in both processes, the historic, before the Historic Preservation Commission, and then coming to the city council. However, let's say Dennis has a, or you, has a discussion with a constituent, and you say, I, I don't know what I could do about this. You're getting it, I mean, you, you will have a bias, have, if nothing else, all of you probably will have formed initially some bias by having read the packet before you walk in here. Whether you had also a discussion with somebody else, the problem is, is when you testify at a Historic Preservation Commission, you're a witness at a Historic Preservation Commission, and now you fit the role of judge in essence. So that's, that's a different thing.
I wasn't asking about that.
We have 15 minutes left. Yeah, this is way too deep.
I think that we are not talking about the legality, we're talking about whether we want this business to be, you know, expanded, or if we want to put a hold on it. And so I think that's what the issue is, I don't think anybody's questioning the legal thing. Charlie?
Yeah, I'm going to extend. Eric basically asked the questions that I was going to ask, let me extend them. So just a few minutes ago, I talked about a better location for Lacy's, rather than at the Family Video in a B1. I suggested, you know, oh, let's take it up north, you know, North Lincoln has B3 and, and preferable location. So basically, we're saying, yeah, we, we might, you know, in my mind, I might be saying, oh, I prefer, you know, here's a location where it would be okay to add a, a liquor license, but over, not in this other neighborhood, even though it's zoned, it would be zoned, but it would be detriment, you know, in, in our opinion, it would be detrimental to the neighborhood, we could deny the license. That seems to be what you're saying.
And you did.
Okay, okay, so that was one.
I mean, basically, you, you didn't deny the license legally, you, you didn't approve the zoning.
Right, a bad location, but what, we could have two B3 locations, and we could say, we could say, in this neighborhood, this B3, in this B3 location, it's not appropriate to have a G1 or a G2 maybe, but here at this other location, it is.
And so you vote to increase the number of liquor licenses?
At that location, for that location. So we're, okay, we're doing a location-based, okay, so that's good to know. And then Mike, and this would be a question for Mike, I know you keep track of the revenue that comes in from these, and I'd like to look at a plot of revenue over time, where we can see if this, you know, if the gaming income is plateauing, because it, once it plateaus, it's not worth adding any more G1 or G2, because they're just going to spread out the, the pool of money that's there for gaming. And so that's a number I think we can get to real quickly.
There's some that do very well, and there's others that do terribly. I think there's another consideration, which would be, if you have a blighted piece of property and somebody wants to invest in it, you should also take that into consideration. So anyway, that's my two cents. Bill?
Just point out too, that when we changed this to a liquor license, to require the liquor license instead of before, I think it was just a, a gaming license or gaming permit or something, before they had to get their state license first, so in order to get their state's license, they actually had to do all the construction and have everything set up just right. But now, by making it a liquor license, they have to, they can get the liquor license before they do any construction, and we've given those like to Dottie's and Flamingo, and maybe to the place being built on University, I don't remember, but we've, we've done that beforehand, so.
Does that mitigate their loss?
So that way, they don't have to endure a loss if we say no, so it's to their advantage to apply early, before they do a lot of construction, I guess.
The Learman location had a liquor license, the old owner had a liquor license for a very long time. So that's also another consideration, that you're not adding a liquor license where there hadn't been one. So anybody else want to talk about this? We're having a discussion, we're not going to have a motion.
Right.
We have another meeting we have to get done before.
Oh, good point, good point. So you want to wrap this up and bring it to another day?
Well, that's a good discussion, thank you.
Okay, all right, so.
Oh yeah, my meeting.
There being no further business, we will adjourn this meeting, and I'll turn it over to Dennis for the next meeting.
Great. And actually, I would appreciate if the, if the Urbana, Urbana video gaming license location map could be put on the website so people could see that.